Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are reconvening from closed session. There is nothing to report. I want to adjourn the closed session at 6:03. You want to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council at 6:03 on Wednesday, September 13th. We will request the City Clerk to read the Metro replay schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, September 15th at 1:00 p.m. and Monday, September 18th at noon. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the room, provided to the Deputy City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. If you could call the roll, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Swin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Detrick is absent. And Mayor Lee.
Here. And at this point, we would like to invite a member of the public. I see Mr. Shergill out there. Ammar Shergill, would you honor us by leading us in the pledge, please?
[inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible]
And at the beginning of all regular meetings, we like to, the City Council would like to always consistently have a moment of silence. So if the members of the public could join us in a moment of silence, please. All right. Next item, we have an agenda in front of us. Entertain a motion.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post-subvention. All right. Next item.
For Section 3, we have no closed-session items on the regular agenda, which takes us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is the 2017 Municipal Update presented by the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce.
All right. Peter, Robert, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. We're here just to give kind of our annual update on some of our major programs that are affecting regional advocacy and then regional economic development. So again, we do appreciate that opportunity. So tonight, we're just going to kind of do a quick overview of the Sacramento Metro Chamber. For those who are not familiar, we are a regional chamber, so we partner with our local chambers like the Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce, but we focus more on regional priorities and regional issues that affect our regional economy. And so we're not married to one specific city, if you will, or one specific county. We represent the six counties and the 23 cities within those jurisdictions. And so tonight, we want to talk about our regional advocacy and organic business growth through our CAP-to-CAP, our State Legis summits study mission, and our Capital Region Small Business Development Center, or SBDC. We're going to kind of go through our CAP-to-CAP program, which is one of the largest Chamber of Commerce advocacy efforts of its kind, back to Washington, D.C., kind of give you a summary of what happened this year at our CAP-to-CAP and some of the results from that program, as well as our State Legis Summit to our State Capitol, and then our upcoming study mission to Austin. And so I'm going to turn this over to my Senior Vice President for Public Policy and Economic Development, Robert Dugan, to walk us through kind of the results of and kind of impacts of this year's two advocacy programs.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. As many of you know, because you've actively engaged in this process, as have several of your department heads, we go through a very deliberate process each year to review, refresh, and sometimes create new regional priorities as we look through 12 policy teams, including everything from air quality, water supply reliability, healthcare, transportation, to name a few. And through that process, we give consideration throughout the region to how those policy priorities affect the region, support the region, support economic growth, and we take a very deliberate approach to be focused on economic development. This year, we ended up with 39 position papers, 103 key policy asks, and 40 key infrastructure projects were identified. When we went through the process this year, it became abundantly clear, we typically try and identify the key themes, it became abundantly clear, three key themes that we needed to focus on that have affected our policy throughout the year as we've advocated. And those are first and foremost regulatory review, reform, and rollback. Now is a unique opportunity for us in time to pursue review of regulatory overreach because the regulations that affect business are certainly the framework in which businesses operate. And in some cases, areas like Lotus and ESA and other places, they're certainly an impediment to you building the city that you'd like to build and the other cities and the counties in the region doing the same. The second piece, second key theme, was infrastructure because we know the pipes and wires, roads and rail upon which commerce moves are the platform upon which our economy is built. And, you know, consistent with every year, we know those are key. And if we don't fight for those infrastructure investments, and you've got several here, obviously, then we're not going to get them because we have to compete with the rest of the country for a lot of that federal money. And finally, the fuel of our workforce. You know, workforce really fuels the economy. It takes entrepreneurs, but those entrepreneurs need workforce. And we've identified several key sectors that have been short in recent years on having the workforce they need, both the managers as well as the career, both technical workforce that they need to pursue growth and economic revenue that drives cities and counties. So engagement by the numbers, as I'm sure you heard in the newspaper, we had the biggest trip in 10 years. We ended up with 360 participants representing all six of the counties in the region, 279 total meetings in Washington, D.C. over that three days that we were there, including 35 major meetings with senior either appointees or senior civil servants within departments, which of course those civil servants last from administration to administration and are often the key to us being successful with accomplishing things that many of your departments here in the city are trying to accomplish to grow your city. Next up, we'll just touch on the State Legislative Summit briefly. Very similar deliberate policy process, although this year, we had nine policy teams pursuing state advocacy and boiled their key issues into nine policy areas related to each of the thematic, and that includes transportation, water, the traditional policy areas that we're fighting on together with you, fighting with the state legislature to ensure we get our fair share and support of. We ended up selling that program out as well with 131 participants this year, and we had a 60, 60 total meetings in the Capitol that afternoon with our various policy teams. So very robust CAP-to-CAP and State Legislative Summit efforts. I'm not going to go into detail due to time on the accomplishments. You do have the presentation, I'm sure, in your packet and on your screen, but we had a really good year in Washington and in the State House to some degree. We made several key asks and key accomplishments that were built off of past years in the interim budget that was put in place, which has also bled into the fiscal year budget before us, including things that are important to all of us in workforce like Pell Grants for summer that are going to allow us to educate more of our young people to enter the workforce, as well as significant funding priorities for transportation and flood control and water infrastructure. I'll just mention a couple of additional things. We've been able to achieve in our region, which is a little unique, some significant bipartisan support for some of the regulatory review and rollback efforts, dealing with the endangered species, dealing with the overreach on the waters of the United States policies. So major progress moving forward. Continue to advocate for things, for instance, that are important here. Two that I'll just mention, certainly the Connector is a project we've all been working on for a very, very long time, and we have to stay diligent because we know that builds and when the opportunity hits to increase funding for those improvements, we're positioned to do so. The second one is, as we look at the entire Sacramento region, of course, the only area that was really hit hard with the groundwater deficit was areas here in South Sacramento County. We know that that was a groundwater challenge. We had surface water, and we're working, we've got a great joint water supply reliability plan for the region, which the region has adopted. That includes support for Sights Reservoir, which puts more water into the Sacramento River system. That also supports the Delta, takes more pressure off of the American River system, which gives us water supply that we can pump into areas that are in a deficit on groundwater and a regional groundwater bank that will also do the same. With that, I'll turn it back over to Peter to talk about studying.
And before we go there, I do want to just personally thank Councilmember Nguyen, who was our honorary co-chair this year for the program, did a phenomenal job actually Monday morning rallying the troops and the delegates to actually storm the Hill and really just be passionate for our region. So thank you very much, Councilmember, for your commitment to the program. So this coming October, we are going to be heading out for our annual study mission. We're going to be heading to Austin. Austin has been a city that's been on our mind for a while. We haven't been there in over a decade, and it's one that's been changing in that decade. And they really have cultivated a culture of innovation. They've looked at their brand, and they've actually done a very good job of actually using that brand to lure not just business but also tourism into that location. And so we look forward to seeing and learning from Austin this year. And for those who, I'm not sure if anyone is going from this council, but we do have a number of regional council members who are coming, but it is a sold-out program. It's our largest study mission in the history of study missions with 135 delegates attending this program this year. So we drive small business retention and expansion in the Capital Region. You see it through our advocacy programs like CAP-to-CAP, State Legis Summit, and our study mission this year to Austin. But we also do a lot with working with economic development departments like those here in Elk Grove and across the six-county region. And then we also, through the work of our SBDC, our Small Business Development Center, are working directly with businesses and entrepreneurs to really give them the tools to succeed in business. And so we're going to talk very briefly on our SBDC program that you may or may not be familiar with, and that's one of the reasons we wanted to talk to you. So the Small Business Development Center is a program of the SBA. It's a federal program. Every county in the country has an SBDC, but they can, in many, many regions, they're the best kept secrets, and not enough businesses are using them. So we have, in late 2014, we rewarded the grant for an eight-county region to service this program, which includes Elk Grove and South County and all of Sacramento County. And so it's a great program that provides one-on-one consultation services to startups and to existing businesses to help them with business planning, financial planning, and really get, help them get access to capital. The program, though, as we said, is an SBA program. It's 50% match, which means the federal government puts up 50%, provided we find a non-federal match. Interestingly enough, California is the only state in the Union that doesn't provide that match. So for our region, we are tasked with raising local dollars, and we have wonderful supports in a lot of our financial institutions and local partners who are stepping up to really say this is an important program and drawing down those federal dollars. But we do workshops, one-on-one consultations, and we really help access capital. And so you kind of see on that, that area, the green area, is our space. And you'll see we have South Placer and Western El Dorado County, which make up the eight counties, along with Lake Colusa in our typical six-county region. So it's been working. And so in our, in less than three years, we've opened up 104 new businesses through this program. We've counseled nearly 1,600 clients. We're looking at over 650 jobs that have been able to be maintained and created through this program. The more important, we've been able to put $32 million back into our local economy. So this is an important piece. Of that $32 million, 12 million of that is just in the first six months of this year. So this program is really working to put capital in our economy and create the engine, the driver, if you will, of economic growth through small businesses. So these loans are great. We've had 280 trainings and workshops, over 7,000 hours of one-on-one consulting meetings, and we have, we are servicing right now just shy of 560 long-term clients. And then here in Elk Grove, we've been able to work with directly 138 clients. We have 50 clients with economic impact, and that means that they've been able, either able to create jobs, retain jobs, or get access to capital. And so you'll see 41 jobs through that process were created through this program, and over $3 million has been put directly into the Elk Grove local economy through this. So you can kind of see one of the success stories here of a local bakery in Elk Grove that hired two new employees and was able to get a $39,000 loan. So it's been a great program, and there are lots of examples like this where we're able to meet one-on-one with businesses in our region. So it is a strong program, one that we're very proud to be running, and one that we are knowing, that we know is making direct impact on our regional economy. So you'll see that one of the things that we do in that eight counties, we have made a conscientious decision to not just be housed in downtown Sacramento, but to be housed across the eight counties. And so you'll see we have lots of locations where we send our client, our consultants to meet with our clients. So the Elk Grove Chamber has been a very good partner in serving as a hub for us so that we can have consultation hours happening here right in your city. And we're always looking to kind of expand those spaces so that we have more opportunities to engage with our clients. And so with that, that's kind of a quick wrap-up of some of our economic development and advocacy policy works, and if there are any questions, we'd be happy to entertain those.
Questions? Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a question, but just a comment. I just wanted to thank both of you, Robert, Peter, for coming out here, presenting this information. A lot of the folks, I think it's educational to see CAP-to-CAP and the Small Business Development Center. We really appreciate it being housed down here in Elk Grove near the Chamber, and appreciate both of your work and leadership on CAP-to-CAP. I've been there a couple times myself, extremely, and the state version as well, extremely efficient and well-run. So thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Questions?
I'm going to echo his word, but I want to say that that was my very first CAP-to-CAP in what an amazing event. It was so well-run, well-put-together for somebody attending the first time. I had somebody assist me the entire way, and Robert, you were just, you have an amazing staff there. I really, truly enjoyed attending that, and I look forward to going again next year. And I will be there in Austin, Texas.
Excellent. That'll be a very good program.
So I'd echo everything that's been said, and I've gone to CAP-to-CAP many times, but I'd taken a different tack. What are we not doing, or what could we do better to partner with you and to put Elk Grove on the map regionally?
So what I would say is, and we've been actually working with Gerald Don, your Economic Development Director, to really start engaging more with Elk Grove. I think the outreach has been much stronger over the last year, and so we're starting to engage in a different way. One of the things that we're looking to do is to find different kind of partnerships and way to use the SBDC in conjunction with the formal city of Elk Grove to leverage those opportunities to really grow organic businesses here. And so I think the partnership that we're establishing and working to develop there is going to be very impactful, not just for the Metro Chamber and the region, but really for the city of Elk Grove and the businesses that are looking to start up here. I think there's great opportunity in that space, and I think that partnership is really strong. And the staff here at the city of Elk Grove participate in our transportation care, does a great job of coming out to our Transportation Committee meetings, making sure that the Elk Grove needs are put on the table so that as a region, we're fighting for the entire region. So I think Elk Grove is doing a very good job of engaging. We want to be more present, and I think that's why we came down here tonight, is that we want to show that as the regional chamber, we are present down here. We're not just holed up in Sacramento. We're engaging on issues that are regional and that do impact the residents here in Elk Grove.
Great. Thank you.
Peter, I have a question. Is there anything that you can think of that is perhaps maybe a program that would increase the partnership with the Metro and Elk Grove Chamber?
Elk Grove Chamber?
Yeah.
So, you know, I think we have a strong relationship right now through the SBDC. I think that partnership is very strong. You know, in truth, the Elk Grove Chamber used to actually come on CAP-to-CAP and engage in our Economic Development Committee. We would welcome that opportunity as well, and we'd welcome that at the State Legis Summit as well. I think the more that we can see the chambers working with our regional policies and being present there, you know, business in Elk Grove, though there are unique situations in Elk Grove that are different than Rancho Cordova versus Roseville, for the most part, business is business and clients, you know, and customers don't look at jurisdictional lines, they shop with the stores they like. And so what we want to be able to see is with our chambers is more collaboration to bring economic development issues, especially to the state level, so that we can advocate for business across the region in a stronger way. We are the second-largest chamber in the state of California, and so there's an opportunity with that to leverage our influence at the State Capitol, but combined with all of our local chambers, including Elk Grove Chamber, we could be that much stronger because not all of my members are Elk Grove Chamber members or vice-versa. So if we had more strength in those numbers, I do believe that we would have more impact and more influence at both the state and federal level.
Have you had an opportunity to sit down with your colleague in Elk Grove Chamber?
I have. And so Angie and I try to meet at least once a year to engage in conversation and to try to, try to push. Part of the problem, and there are just issues around finances with a lot of chambers, CAP-to-CAP can be a burden from an economic standpoint just because it's a five-day program, so the cost of travel and everything can be daunting, and as a nonprofit, nonprofits just don't have the travel budgets typically. So we're also working on ways to see if we can't find scholarship opportunities to help some of our chamber partners be able to engage in a different way. So we're hoping to engage more with the Elk Grove Chamber and really support their efforts and vice-versa so that we can carry that message that are the needs of local businesses here, also from a regional perspective to the state and federal.
I think that would be beneficial, you know, especially having somebody from the Elk Grove Chamber participating in CAP-to-CAP.
Yeah.
Been doing it a couple of years, and I don't think I've seen anyone from Elk Grove Chamber.
It's been, it's been a while. And again, you know, during the downturn, a lot of chambers had to cut all of the travel budgets. It just was the easiest thing to cut out. And so our hope is that as things get better and memberships grow, that those are things that can be restored. And like I said, our hope as the regional chamber, because we're not in competition with local chambers, there's always been a little tension amongst the chamber worlds, but our hope is to not be seen as a competitor, but more as, you know, a partner with all of our chambers, is to find these scholarship opportunities to really engage with our chambers from Roseville to Elk Grove to Davis, you know, all across the region to really get their input and be part of our Economic Development Committee so that we can, again, amplify that voice in a more tremendous way.
All right. I mean, I wouldn't support that completely, and if there's anything that I can do on my end, I'd be happy to help.
Appreciate that.
Looking forward to stronger collaboration, I should say.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? No? Good. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right. Next item.
Take us to Section 5, our public comment.
Okay. First speaker lined up is Ammar Shergill. Calling Ammar is Denisee Ellis.
Good evening, Council. Thank you all for your efforts, not just here, but every day out in the community. I know you work very hard. I'm going to speak fast because we have a couple of different items that I want to talk to you about. My name is Ammar Shergill, speaking on behalf of the American Safe Public Affairs Association. I'm also an executive board member for the California Democratic Party. Last council meeting, a number of community members came and made remarks regarding the consequences of bigotry, Nazi, KKK, and the death of Heather Hare in Charlottesville. Unfortunately, council stumbled, stumbled actually badly in some cases in its response, caused some controversy in the community by failing to make a clear statement regarding the bigotry that President Trump gave safe harbor true. But to your credit, you know, we prepared a statement, and all of you, the entire council, signed on to that statement. I wanted to thank you today for doing that, as well as the Elk Grove School Board, some Elk Grove School Board members and other community leaders. Now, we're asking you to take that statement and repurpose it into a resolution. I prepared that and have emailed it to all of you and staff so that you can consider that and make it an official statement of the city of Elk Grove. You know, we've seen recently that Elk Grove homes are painted with racist epithets, seen a business terrorized with violent threats. We've seen Confederate flags on schoolyards. So it's time we admit that Elk Grove isn't immune to the kind of racism we've seen in other parts of the country and ask you to pass that resolution and make the kind of clear statement that Elk Grove needs. In addition to that, I ask that you consider directing staff and the Elk Grove Police Department to look at how they track these kinds of incidents, not just felonies and misdemeanors, but just incidents so that the police department has a kind of interaction that maybe can stop future events. The second topic that I'm going to address is immigration, which unfortunately is an issue even for a city like Elk Grove. The federal government promised hundreds of thousands of children and adults across the country that they wouldn't be punished just because their parents brought them to this country undocumented. Now, the Trump administration is now revoking, going back on that promise with the hope that it will be fixed by a dysfunctional Congress. Now, I'm not going to hold my breath waiting for that Congress to make a fix because in the meantime, it's a complicated legal mess, and citizens of Elk Grove don't know where to turn. So what we, what we have proposed is that the city set up a fund to provide education, outreach, legal assistance for residents of Elk Grove, something that's already being worked on in Sacramento, something that the state of California is setting up a $20 million fund for. It's clearly the right moral choice. These are, you know, our neighbors, and they need our help, but it's also the right fiscal choice. These are people that, you know, contribute to the financial success of our city. They have jobs, they're going to school, and it makes sense to ensure that they aren't pushed into the shadows to a place where they stop cooperating with civic authorities. So I'd ask you to direct staff to work on that. Since I raised two issues very quickly, I'm going to take just a couple of seconds for one more.
Go ahead.
There's, I'm sure you're going to hear from other members of the community today regarding, you know, a threat regarding citizens and a business here. And our temptation is always to say, that's not Elk Grove, we stand with you. But I encourage you to maybe consider the other alternative, that Elk Grove, like other places, has a troubled history with race, and maybe that is part of Elk Grove. And the people that are being attacked, you know, Sikhs, Muslims, Latinos, African-Americans, the people that really feel the brunt of it, aren't represented on the City Council table, and we need allies, particularly Councilmember Hume, particularly Councilmember Detrick, to not just speak here, but to go into those communities, which we maybe are not as welcoming, and have those tough conversations there, away from cameras, away from the microphones, that stop the kind of difficult racist epithets and threats that we've seen in our community. Thank you for your patience. Thank you all.
Ammar, I just want to interject real quickly, a quick comment. I know you and I had a conversation. These are issues that are meaningful to me, you know, certainly the immigration issues. I'll bring it up in public comment, but I want to thank you for, you know, taking the leadership on that and bringing it to council. But, you know, just to go on record, I'm no different. There's no secret that I'm a person of Mong ethnicity, and when I got elected to the council, I got, I received hate mails while telling me refugees go back home. And while I was running for mayor, I got the same thing, threats to harm my family. So I completely identify, and these are real issues that we really have to look at. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I appreciate, these are, these are tough issues, and we all stumble, particularly when you're speaking extemporaneously, and you haven't made a prepared statement. So I really do appreciate that when we did come together and prepare, make that statement, you all signed on it, you realized how important it was. So thank you all.
Okay. Next speaker is Denisee Ellis, and then Audrey Shelton.
Sorry. Hi, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good to see you again. So I'm actually back. I was here at the last council meeting, and I made a request to the council that they make a recommendation to the school board in light of an incident that happened at Elk Grove High School. And Mayor Lee, while you were really sympathetic, you did advise me to address the school board, and you had said that elected officials don't like other elected officials telling them what to do. I disagree, but I'll get back to that. Right before my address at that council, like Ammar just mentioned, several community leaders before me addressed the Charlottesville incident and requested that the council issue a statement, as he was talking about condemning the president for his equivocation and being a white supremacist apologist, and condemning the events of Charlottesville. And while you were all, you know, very sympathetic and condemning the incident in various ways, it took those community leaders drafting that statement for the public to know where the council stood. Mayor Lee, in co-signing this letter, you were telling an elected official what to do. And it was good, and it was right, and I appreciated it. You're a constituent of these electeds as well, and it's our job to hold them accountable and tell them what we want. They need to hear from us. The Vice Mayor also pointed out at that time, at that meeting, that Elk Grove's approach is to be proactive and not reactive to situations, and he mentioned the Youth Commission as well as the Multicultural Commission. And he brought up the multicultural festival that was upcoming at the time and said that because Elk Grove is so diverse, that it could be a target for, you know, racially motivated crimes, and that we would see an additional police presence that would be noticeable. These commissions were established before the introduction of this new administration, and before you saw this groundswell of activism, before you saw my face at City Council fairly regularly, and before you just saw, you know, City Council and protests in general being more visible. There's evidence to support that the hatred that has been here all along is being emboldened by the president, to no longer be relegated to the shadows. While these hate crimes aren't new, they're becoming more visible. The answer can't just be more police. We have a handful of police, more, little more than 100,000 to 170,000 people. They can't be effective in every aspect. Mr. Swin, you said that we need to mind our own business and focus on the people in this community, and for context, you did denounce the president's statements in the events of Charlottesville, but I think we have to realize that this is our business. You know, the Confederate flags worn as accessories at our school, KKK spray painted on the houses of minority-owned individuals. Yesterday, a threat to the owner of an African-American-owned business. These are issues in our community, and this is just the last three weeks. These are issues that are permeating our community. Yesterday, a threat to the owner of an African-American-owned business. These are issues in our community, and this is just the last three weeks. These are issues that are permeating our community. This is a local issue. We need our leaders to be at the forefront, not because I'm asking, and not because our community leaders write a letter that the council cosigns, but because it's not enough to say that we condemn hate, it's not enough to say that this is what has been done, and it's not enough. We need community leaders. We need inclusivity. We need to educate, and if we can't change minds, we need to drive the bigots back into the shadows. I would like the council to convene a community engagement commission with the sole intent of fostering interracial relations and understanding and inclusivity. This commission should be active in the community, visible in all parts of the community, and not just meeting and events at schools and in our community as well. I don't think that I should have to ask my leaders to stand up for what is right and condemn what is wrong and be proactive to make change, and I would appreciate your consideration on this matter.
Thank you very much, and just to let you know, my statement was not to sort of dismiss what you have raised, but actually, what it was, was to develop the foundation for a conversation that we had with the two-by-two with the school district, in which we did have that conversation, and, you know, they have suggested that they're going to look into it, and policy-wise, and they'll be working on it, so.
I did address the board, too.
Colleague to colleague, yeah. And of course, the other thing that comes to mind is, I think you raised a very good point in regards to having a serious conversation about this, but my first reaction would be, let's take this to the multicultural, you know, committee and, you know, have them take the leadership on this as well. So, just a thought. Can have a side conversation on it, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next speaker is Audrey Shelton. Following Audrey is Guy Kewany.
At the last council meeting, citizens voiced concerns about the Confederate sympathetic culture in Elk Grove. We've seen this for a while with Confederate flags at homes and on the back of trucks, and then after Charlottesville, of course, pinned to the backpack at Elk Grove High School. And you all voiced condemnation of the violence at Charlottesville, but you didn't voice condemnation of the president's shameful response to that incident, and I found that disappointing. Mr. Mayor, your answer was to promote the multicultural festival, and Councilman Swin, you said we need to mind our own business. Councilwoman Nguyen, I was glad that you were interested in going to the school board and voicing your support for banning hate speech, but I didn't see you at the meeting where I showed up to support Denessa. And Mr. Councilman Hume, your comments were the most disappointing to me out of everyone. I felt that you absolutely mimicked the president's sentiments, and the hate was on both sides, and that it was a slippery slope between the Confederate flag and the US flag, which I think represents freedom and the ideals of aiming for equality, even though we're not there yet, whereas the Confederate flag represents institutionalized slavery. I don't think it's a slippery slope. Primarily, I'd like to bring to your attention an incident that happened since the last council meeting. The night of August 30th, it was the early morning hours, actually, so like 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, there was, a friend of mine heard a noise outside her apartment, and she didn't do anything about it that night. That morning, she was taking her kids to school, and in the rush, she doesn't think her children saw it, but she saw spray paint outside of her apartment. Fuck you, punk bitch, and KKK. And the last one is the most disturbing to me. She hustled her kids off to school and then went to the apartment complex and asked them to paint over it before her kids got home. She didn't want them to see that and then have to explain what that meant. Sorry, this was very upsetting to me.
It's okay.
Do you still think hosting a multicultural festival once a year is enough? Do the issues of white supremacy, racism, and Nazi sympathizing seem like the business of Elk Grove now? And it feels like empty lip service, just condemning the violence. I'd like to know how long you'll turn a blind eye to what's happening in Elk Grove, and this permissive refusal to take action, I think, is harmful. Thank you.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. My return question is, what are your thoughts? I mean, what would you suggest that we can do as a council?
Well, I think you're probably aware, our police force is majority white male. These are large men. It's not particularly comforting to call them when you are a person, a minority, or a petite woman, like my friend. Maybe getting them to engage more in speaking to high school students, or mentorship at the high school level that would encourage our very diverse community to, I don't know, diversify the police force. Maybe it's a career they would end up considering. I know that mentorship of students by police forces the police to get to know the children as people and individuals, and see them less as like a criminal element when they're hanging around, I don't know, a wing store at night getting hot wings or something, and they're just a crowd of kids. They're seen very suspiciously. I and a group of my friends were seen suspiciously when we were at a pizza parlor as children. I think that making Elk Grove a sanctuary city would go a long way to being a message of hope. I know that California is trying, and it's sort of rocky, and we don't know where that will end up. I also think that the council's pressure on the county board of supervisors and the sheriff to get the ICE facility out of the Rio Consumas Correctional Center would be phenomenal. There's a contract with the correctional center that brings in $5 million a year to the sheriff's department. I don't know where the funds go, but it's primarily touted as a financial decision to encourage ICE to come back each year. I think the contracts are five years, actually, so. Sorry, so the sheriff's department will say that this is a financial decision, and it brings in income, and I don't think that's a good enough reason to promote profit over our communities, our people's lives. And I know that in El Dorado Hills, there were CCNRs and HOAs found that explicitly stated that Caucasians only could buy the homes or move into the homes or rent only to Caucasians. I think we need to review the ones here in Elk Grove and make sure that we don't have anything like that on the books. So I don't know if you were expecting all these suggestions, but I came prepared.
Right, and, you know, I think my point is, it has to take a community effort. There's no quick answer to it, right? And so what you've suggested is ways in which we can improve diversity, and I understand that completely, but, you know, what I was interested in is what we can do as a whole that would be able to address the issues, and, you know, the spray painting that you've brought up. So, thank you. Yeah. And for the record, I did, you know, appear at the Capitol event, City Hall, Sacramento City Hall, and I, early on, condemned the president's position on that, so, thank you. Next speaker is Guy Kewany. Following Guy is Lynn Wheat.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm here to make some comments on two weeks ago meeting. Every two weeks, you come here and you pledge allegiance to the flag, and you end up with comments with the liberty and justice for all. I want to know, where is the justice when you decided to take away my zoning for 30 years? Where is the justice? I had almost 300 acres in this city. I'm the only one lost zoning over the last 10 years' period. So, Mr. Mayor, tell me, where is the justice? How did I lose my rights after holding the zoning for 30 years? You told me one time, Mr. Mayor, they took people's right away where you came from. This is America. How do you lose your rights? Councilmember Nguyen, I think you were fooled. You were not given proper information. You followed some other council members, what they made the comments on my project. If you knew the history of my property, you would not have voted. Mr. Hume, I think you and me have a personal vendetta. You should not have voted for my project. Why would you vote? You've been on this council for so many years. You and me disagree, strongly disagree about my property. Remember, I'm the only one lost zoning in East Elk Grove. Nobody in Elk Grove history has ever lost a zoning. My zoning was carried forward from Sacramento County zoning, 1987. It was a general plan. County did not lose their property. I own some property next to the county. They did not lose their zoning, but I lost my zoning. I have one more comment on the planning department. I've been doing projects in this city. I've lived here for 40 years, almost. I'm one of the oldest guy here. And when I did my project on Sheldon Road, planning department, CJ particularly, even on this last two meetings, his attitude was always negative. "No, we can't do this. No, I'm not going to listen to this. No, we're not going to do this." Never answers emails. Sometimes he'll answer email. You can't get to him to access. Why do you have people like that working in your department who have already predetermined mine, like you had, Mr. Hume? You should have excused yourself. This is a racial city. It's been racial. I'm the only one. I'm Indian. I'm the only one lost zoning. You know how much value that is? Approximately $80 million over 310 acres lost. Who else lost the zoning in this city? Who has, Mr. Hume? You've been here for a long time. You know that. Why did I lose my zoning, 30 years? Just in 30 minutes, I lost the zoning right here? Mr. Lee, you were misdirected. You told me, you assured me I would never lose my rights. What happened? Thank you.
Any clarification for the record? The direction the council gave was to go back out into the community. Jason, can you clarify that, our discussion that we had a couple of weeks ago?
I think from the meeting last week, it was to check back in on the direction that had been provided on the general plan update. And so those items that were presented at last week's meeting, and one of the properties was Mr. Kewany's property, the other was the Triangle area. The direction for going back out into the community was for the Triangle area, but I think they were still moving ahead with what the general plan update had set up, and what the direction had been given for Mr. Kewany's property was to go with what had been done to date for the zoning designation that had been given through the general plan update process. And I can look to staff if any other clarifications needed on that.
One more comment. Mr. Hume, you made every effort to get Triangle approved, because those are your friends. You went after them. You were totally on the front.
Guy, I don't know why you're coming after me, man. Up until before tonight, I thought we were friends.
You went after my project for a long time.
I did not go after your project, sir.
You and me have disagreed for 17 years.
No, I did not. And in fact, your fight, if you wanted to wage it, was in 2004, when the original general plan was approved, which identified your property as rural property.
You were still there. Even the last meeting, listen to your last meeting, see what you're saying. You had no, you just started right off the bat. No. Why? Why can't you, why can't you look at? Your council is controlled by 10 or 12 people in Sheldon area? The whole council is controlled like that? Why, Mr. Hume?
I don't know why you're sizzling me out, Guy. I honestly don't. It catches me by surprise. I thought you were a friend of mine.
Where is the justice?
Can I?
Where's my rights? Where's my rights, Mr. Lee?
Make your statement, please. Make your statements. Your time is up. Thank you. Yeah. I just need a clarification on that, because my point in this is, when I assure the, my comment, my interest was in the event that we do change the zoning, it's got to be consistent, the boundaries in which the rural area has to be defined, and that was the gist of my statement. I don't know if you, any of the members recall what the rationale behind that was, but I think that, you know, I mean, that, I don't know. Thoughts? Comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, you're exactly right. That was the whole gist of the deliberation, was the fact that we identified a rural area within the city of Elk Grove. We defined those boundaries. The property in question lies within that rural area, and so therefore, it is only permitted to go to a certain density.
Right. And so, anyways, any other comments? We're good? Councilmember? Member? No? Okay. Next speaker, Lynn Wheat, please.
Good evening. Lynn Wheat, citizen planner. I've provided you some pictures this evening for my discussion and what I want to present. I've told you over time, being a citizen planner, that I'd like to share with you some of your projects that you've approved and what they look like now. And so in July 10, 2013, at the request of developers, you amended our Laguna Ridge Madera area. Now, in picture one, that I have identified as the gem, if you could take a look at that, you will see that there are no overhead power lines. And so when you look at the skyline, you see the very attractive light fixtures that were required by the developers at that time to meet with the standards of that area. And so this was to be the gem. And over the years, things have been rezoned, there have been general plan amendments made, and now, since 2013, and at the request of a developer, we have what I call Power Grid One. And so the gem is maybe a portion of the Laguna Ridge plan, and now we have the power grid. And if you notice that skyline, not quite as attractive or as appealing as what we were to have, which is the gem. I've provided you, because I am not a photographer, I've provided you a couple pictures of the grid, so that you could really get a look at that. And it was done because it was too costly for the developers to keep with the plan that was the intent of the city. So the unfortunate part with smaller developers or residents like myself, unless we can fund campaigns and get the deals made in back rooms, we really don't have a chance here. So it's not really a matter of what ethnicity background you are. It really is a matter of follow the money, whose palms get greased first. So for us to say that we have a gem anymore in our city that was near the civic center site, we can no longer say that, because we continue to bend over for the developers. So in my personal opinion, and I'm going to say it now, really, we ought to have the developers sitting up there, and not you, who are controlled by the developers and make your decision ahead of time. We lost the gem a long time ago because you would not stick to the game plan. And you, as a council, have decided through your CFD development fees and other things, now I recognize some don't change, but others do. And those others that do, you can vote to change them every year. So you're passing costs on to our residents and not creating quality. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tracy Stafford. Following Tracy is Fabrizio Sasso.
Good evening. Actually, I'm going to go back to a few topics ago, and that was when we were discussing the issues that we have here in terms of racism and attacks that continue to recur here in Elk Grove. And I believe that what was said before pretty much covered it. I mean, one of the challenges that we have is that there seems to be this dismissal of the incidents that we experience, as though they're ad hoc, or random, or occasional, or often just not important, or they're children. And that really discounts not only our experiences for those folks who are being attacked in this way, but also it's about ignoring the issue. And I was on at the last city council meeting when the decision was made. I guess a couple of you denounced what's happened in Charlottesville. All of you, as mentioned before, definitely had an issue with the hatred that occurred there. But I couldn't believe when I was told that some of you actually said, "It's not our issue." But I couldn't believe when I was told that some of you actually said, "It's not our issue," or more importantly, that we need to focus on Elk Grove, as though Elk Grove does not have this problem. And that's what allows it to continue. That's what allows the hatred to breed. And unfortunately, I am fully aware that this is not new and that it's not, we aren't even seeing higher numbers. What we're seeing is people just being more open with it because it has been accepted, basically, from higher up. And if we don't make a statement, and when I say statement, I mean more than signing on to something after the fact because of pressure. I mean actually do something within the community. And to actually mention the multicultural festival as a way to deal with this issue is, I won't even say it's insulting, it's painful. It's painful because it means that you are completely disconnected from what we deal with every day as minorities. And again, to not denounce it, all of you, immediately says to me that the lens that you are governing through is not one that is beneficial to all of us. And what I ask of you is that you consider forming a diversity advisory commission and a commission that has a little bit more power to actually have events, meaning forums and regular meetings, actually deal with the issues that occur, and find out what's really happening in the community. Deal with all of you, as well as our other leadership and the police force. And come together with recommendations from not just you and not just the individual conversations that you have, but from our community, because you don't see it the way that we do, and we don't expect you to. I don't know your story, and you can't possibly experience mine. And that's why we need more representation than what we see here today. I can tell you until the cows come home, but you're never going to experience it. And we need a commission that's going to make social change. Social change, which is much deeper than an event or a statement. We need to change the way that we think as a community. We need to acknowledge that there are issues, deep rooted issues, that did not start on November ninth. This is not about November ninth. This is about Elk Grove seeing itself for what it is and acknowledging it. That will go a long way. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fabrizio Sasso, following Fabrizio is Carol Rogers.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Fabrizio Sasso with the Sacramento Central Labor Council. I want to give credit where credit is due and say thank you very much for responding to the Charlottesville attack. I know that we may have put you on the spot at the last council meeting, but since then, each and every one of you has signed on to a joint letter, as well as other elected officials, denouncing the attacks. And it's great to see that our leaders are denouncing racism and hatred and denouncing other leaders' comments that seek to divide us. And there's a lot of division in this country, and we're at a critical point of division. And we look to you, as leaders, to figure out how we can all come together as unison. And so I want to thank you for that. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you all about another issue that is pressing. As you are all aware, the DACA program will be going away over the next six months, and this is an important issue for Elk Grove residents in the metropolitan region. I believe we have, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we have about sixty thousand undocumented folks here, as well as thousands of DACA participants, including members of my staff, including union members within all of our affiliates. And, you know, they often, people often say, "Well, Fabrizio, why does labor get involved in these issues? You know, this is not a work-related issue." Well, it really is, and when workers are afraid to go to work because they're afraid of workplace raids, this is an issue to them. These are our members, and, you know, we call ourselves a labor family. And some of you were at the Labor Day event this, a couple of weeks back, or last week. And we are a family, and so we have to protect all the members of our family. And so because of that, we had been working with the city of Sacramento, who initiated the Fuel Network. The Fuel Network is a conglomerate of nonprofits, religious organizations, labor, other community organizations, working together, addressing some of the urgent issues around immigration in order to protect our family members, in order to protect our community members. And so the Fuel Network is operating right now to deliver services, legal services in cases of emergency, rapid response legal services as well, should there be detainments, to provide know your rights presentations, preparedness for families, criminal background checks, applications. There's a great need right now to provide funding for applicants. It costs about five hundred dollars for someone to apply, reapply through the DACA program and extend their time here. We don't want them to be separated from their families, and these folks came here unwillingly in most cases. They were children when they came here. So we ask that the city council continue to, I know there's been some discussions with staff, we ask that you continue to direct staff to work with the Fuel Network and see how Elk Grove can participate in the program as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Rogers, following Carol is Sonia Lewis.
Hi, I'm Carol Rogers, and I'm coming to address the incidence of hatred that have been occurring in Elk Grove. There are ten ways to fight hate, put out by the Southern Poverty Law Center. The first one is to act, to do something in the face of hatred. Apathy will be interpreted as acceptance by the perpetrators, the public, and worse, by the victims. So community members must take action if we don't hate persists. We should join forces, reach out to allies from churches, schools, clubs, and other civic groups. Create a diverse coalition. Include children, police, and the media. Gather ideas from everyone and get everyone involved. Support the victims. Hate crime victims are especially vulnerable. If you're a victim, report every incident in detail and ask for help. If you learn about a hate crime in your community, show support. Let victims know you care. Surround them with comfort and protection. Speak up. Hate must be exposed and denounced. Help news organizations achieve balance and depth. Do not debate hate group members in conflict-driven forums. Instead, speak up in ways that draw attention away from hate and toward unity. Educate yourself. An informed campaign improves its effectiveness. Determine if a hate group is involved and research its symbols and agenda. Understand the difference between a hate crime and a bias incident. Number six, create an alternative. Do not attend a hate rally. Find another outlet for anger and frustration and for people's desire to do something. Hold a unity rally or parade to draw media attention away from hate. Seven, pressure leaders. Elected officials and other community leaders can be important allies, but must overcome reluctance and others, their own biases, before they're able to take a stand. Number eight, stay engaged. Promote acceptance and address bias before another hate crime can occur. Expand your comfort zone by reaching out to people outside your own group. Nine, teach acceptance. Bias is learned early, often at home. So we want to dismiss some of these things as childish pranks. Excuse me, that hatred's coming from adults. If it's a kid that did it, it's because they learned it at home. Host a diversity and inclusion day on campus. Reach out to young people who may be susceptible to hate group propaganda and prejudice. And ten, dig deeper. Look inside yourself for biases and stereotypes. Commit to disrupting hate and intolerance at home, at school, in the workplace, and in faith communities. And I read all of that because it's hard for me to give a speech sometimes, but bear with me, and I look forward to seeing what happens next. And I appreciate all the speakers who went before me, who spoke on this topic, and I support those discussions on both, on the DACA as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Summer Thomas, following Summer is Shari Wilson. Summer Thomas. Oh, oops. Strike that. Let's do Sonia Lewis first and then Summer Thomas. Sorry about that.
Good evening, council. My name is Sonia Lewis, and I am a resident of, by choice, Elk Grove. I've been a resident for almost ten years. I'm a mother, a taxpayer, a business owner, and I'm a community activist. I come to you wearing each of those hats separately and collectively because race relations in this city affects my ability to be a mother, a taxpayer, a business owner, and a community activist. I am a former high school and middle school teacher of this school district, Elk Grove Unified School District, teaching history and social studies. In my eighteen years of career teaching, I chose Elk Grove as my home, not just as a home, but for a place for my kids to be educated. As a community activist with Black Lives Matter Sacramento, I am appalled to continue to hear of racist, bigoted behavior from longstanding portions of this community. It's nothing new. I truly believe that racism in Elk Grove runs deep, and it's going to take some deep power and action to eradicate it. This community is delusional. If you think we can come to the conclusion that a festival can fix it, contrary to believing that it is a fix, it goes deeper to waving of Confederate flags, to bullying threats made to business owners who are not white. Last month, my son came home from school at Franklin High School. He showed me a video because he's been educated by his mother, that a Confederate flag means nothing but "I support slavery," which then means that I support owning people who are his ancestors. And with that capitalist system, meaning that I can own you and that I'm better than you, I have to teach my kids to want to recognize bigotry. So I took a video of that Snapchat video of the student at Elk Grove High School. I posted it on my Facebook page. I made it go viral because it's important to me, because my son said it was important to him. With that being said, since there has been other issues, not only at schools, but in our communities, and they continue to go on, and we have to take a look at that, and I'm sorry, but a festival cannot fix it. Our community that prides itself on being diverse, I, I'm sorry, this community, racism runs deep. I remember being, sitting in stands at Elk Grove High School, where parents and grandparents, so I'm telling you, it runs deep, because a parent and a grandparent told, made a comment to my son on a wrestling match that beat his grandson. "You got beat by one of them?" And being who I am, I said, "One of who?" Racism in Elk Grove runs deep. I can remember in 2016, that in Africa, and I'm going to wrap this up really quickly, in 2016, there was an African American honor student at Consumnis Oaks High School who was kicked out of his graduation for wearing a kente cloth stole, which is a pride symbol of being an African American. He was kicked out of his graduation. So again, a festival is nothing. Elk Grove is Charlottesville. Elk Grove is every city with nooks and crannies that hide bigotry. However, the reality is, the emboldened racism is in our face. I welcome you all to visit a page that I created, and by the way, Elk Grove Unified School District has not sat down with myself and other community members who have complained about the Confederate flag being a part of students attire. I created a page called Elk Grove Unified School District Untold Stories: Racism and Bigotry. And if you read some of those stories, it's not just last month. It's not just in 2016, when a kid was kicked out of his graduation. This has been going on in Elk Grove for, since Elk Grove's beginning. So I implore you, as new council faces, new demographics, because before this, this would not have been the demographics of Elk Grove City Council, you have an opportunity to change that because, again and one last time, racism runs deep in Elk Grove.
Our next speaker is Summer Thomas. Summer Thomas, and then Shari Wilson.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for giving me your attention. I didn't come with anything prepared. I didn't even think I would be speaking this evening at all. Shari Wilson is the owner of Dream Girls Salon in Old Town Elk Grove. She is a friend of mine, and I am the person that posted the incident that happened at her salon. It was, the response was overwhelming, even for me, and it wasn't my salon at all, but she is my friend. I've been a resident of Elk Grove by choice since 2003, and I've felt the presence of racism in this city. I have, from the time I got here. I've felt it. My children have felt it in the schools. When you speak of, you know, when we report when Shari has had six or seven incidents that she reported, all of them to Elk Grove PD, and you want to blow it off as maybe it was homeless, maybe it was an isolated incident, maybe it was a teenager, the teenagers that go to our schools, that influence other children, who grow up to be residents of this city? They are the future of this city. So if it's a teenager or not, should it not be addressed? This is a community issue. When you refer, or you direct, or you shift responsibility to the school district when a parent reports that there's a Confederate flag being displayed, which is very provocative in nature, and you direct them or shift responsibility to Elk Grove Unified School District, is that not a school district that represents your city, which you represent? Why is it shifted? Why is it now their issue, and now it's not being addressed, and it's just floating out there? My son was spat on at school. I can't say that it was racially motivated because I'm dealing with a nine-year-old. But he also spat on my son in our cul-de-sac, who is fourteen years old. That came from somewhere. Now, either he has an issue with spitting, or somewhere along the way, someone in his home told him it was okay to spit on children that looked like mine. My son is nine. He doesn't even know how to process that. I don't even know how to process it as a parent. I've been black my whole life. There's nothing I can do about it. There's not anything I want to do about it. I'm okay with this. But it seems to me that people in this community are not. So as, you know, the festivals, you can have a festival, you can have food trucks, you can have all of these things, but what you need is a town hall meeting. What you need is a discussion. What we need is to not call it, "Oh, you know, it's generations of, you know, cow-town mentality." No, it's racism. It's hate. It's what it is. And we have to stop using these fluff words to describe something that is demeaning and it's shameful to people, and it makes people not want to come out of their homes, and it makes people not want to be a resident here. I want to move sometimes, but it's okay for me to be here. I should be here. Why shouldn't I be? But our police department needs to address things appropriately, and they need to keep count of the incidents that happen appropriately. They need to track these things. I have more stories, but I don't have more time right in this moment. But I have time for a town hall meeting, I have time for a conversation with the school district, with the community, with my council. I have time. Nothing but. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Shari Wilson, following Shari is Elaine Murphy Hassan.
Good evening. My name is Shari Wilson, and I own Dream Girls Fine Hair Imports and Salon, and this is my husband, Marcel Wilson. Thank you, councilmember Pat, for coming today to see me, and also Mayor Steve. I appreciate you guys coming and checking on me. Yesterday morning, I got a call from one of my stylists, actually FaceTime, and she was shaking, and she told us that we received a hate mail, and it was stuck on my door. And inside the message, I'm pretty sure all of you guys read it. were used to describe myself and the women in my salon was disgraceful. But it wasn't the first time, and it wasn't the first time we called the police. I had visas thrown at my front door at the salon, I had people coming, come up and down the street and call us nigger bitches, get out of town, go back to Southsack, go back to the ghetto where you belong, we don't want you here. This wasn't the first time they did that. I received numerous hate threats at my salon. It's serious. It frustrated me yesterday when the officer told me they only had one on record, one. But I called many times. When I called, they said it may be a teenager playing. One time, they told me it was a sick lady who may live on the, the railroad tracks. Don't pay no attention, but we'll find her. One minute, they told me, "All those kids who ride those big trucks with the flags, oh, they're just kids, but we'll report it." What has to happen for you guys to see? It's an issue. Do my black child got to be hung? It just happened in New York. A black boy was hung by a fourteen-year-old in Utah, and she, he survived, thank God. But the woman in Utah who was hung didn't survive, she's dead. What has to happen? Council member, you asked me, what should we do today? I told you, we need to start with a conversation. We need to have a town hall meeting. We need to let everyone know that this is real, and it's not just me and my family. I just moved to a ranch-style home over off of Sheldon, and I'm not welcome there either. They asked my husband, "Oh, you're a football player, huh?" He says, "No." And then he's a drug dealer. It's no way, you're a hairstylist, you can't afford this. You're eyesore to our street. This is what we hear, because I'm, I'm African-American, and I have six boys, and I'm, I'm married, I'm almost thirty-eight, I'm forty, I mean, when can you be successful being black? When? I can't drive a nice car, I can't drive down Old Town without getting pulled over, because that happens too. I got pulled over, I get pulled over all the time. I pulled out my street and got pulled over, because he said my headlights wasn't on, but they automatically come on. He just wanted to pull me over, because he assumed that I was probably doing something illegal. Racism exists in Elk Grove, and we need you guys to wake up. We need you guys to take action. What else has to happen? We need a discussion. It's happening in our schools, it's happening in our elementary schools. I live in 95624, I work in 95624, my kids go to school in 95624. I give back to 95624. I need you to help me and stand with me in 95624, in all of Elk Grove. We need you to stand with us.
I make an honest living here in Elk Grove. I have a career here in Elk Grove. I have a household of nine, and I don't expect for you guys to understand what it's like to live in my skin. But I can kind of share some of my experiences in Elk Grove, trying to hold it together, trying to do the right thing, trying to guide my children in the right direction. And when you're constantly being reminded of the ignorance of the people that, and the stuff that's happening, it happens to me, and it's happened to me in my workplace, it's happened to me driving with the, the law enforcement, pulling me up, whose car is this? Not, you know, it, it, it just always comes down to, I'm trying to gather my words, I'm It's provoking, very provoking. And we're trying to, we're reactive at this point, but it's a certain time that we, you, the city of Elk Grove needs to be proactive and own it. Me standing here before you, we're crying out, just to be treated equal. We haven't done anything wrong, we were born this way. We're trying to prevent it from going in a different direction, and you guys have the ability to come together with us and stand with us, and stop looking past the things that, it, it's just, it's, it's happening, it's terrible. I'm a black man that's thirty-four years old, and I, we all parents here, we all have families, we understand how much that is, on top of going out every day, having to deal with this, it needs to be addressed before it gets out of hand. It's already, it's passed out of hand. And I, I don't know what else to tell you, other than, we're trying, we're trying to hold on until you guys figure this out, but we can, you know, we're human too. We're no different than you guys, everyone in here, we're all human. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
So with that being said, I, I ask that you guys open up a town hall discussion, a dialogue, so we can really talk about the situation. So next time, we won't be in here talking about somebody got killed, or we found our, one of our kids hanging from a tree, because it's possible. Thank you.
Shari, I just wanted to say, I, I felt so fortunate that I had the time to come by today and, and talk with you about this. Marcel, I want to say, behind every good man's a good woman, and you got a great woman right there. She explained the situation to me, she was strong, she was direct, and it's, it's, it's a shame, and I feel not only for you, for having been, you know, the target of this horrific incident, but I know that it affects everyone else out there who has had these incidents happen, or these whispers, or, or the, the, the comment at the wrestling match, or things like that, that it's, it's, like you said, it's in the shadows, but it's there. And so, you know, when we get to council comments, I have some comments to make about what you said to me, because what I asked her at, at her salon today, is I said, "If you could snap your fingers and make something happen, what would it be?" And she said, "I'd want a discussion." And I thought, that's such a, like, low-level, low-hanging fruit, kind of, you know, great starting place, and, and I thank you for your service, I understand you work for the water company here in town, so appreciate that as well. But I'm sorry for what you had to go through in the last couple of days, I'm sorry for what you've had to go through in your life, for something you can't change, it's, it's inexcusable.
And I want to say thank you, and thank you to everybody who brought flowers, called the salon, brought cards today, it means the world. And we're going to continue to do what we do, they're not kicking us out, we're going to, we're here to stay. I'm an Elk Grovean, I am an Elk Grovean, and I'm asking that city of Elk Grove, you guys, let's, let's start with a conversation. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sherri and Marcel, I, I just want to personally also just express my sympathies that this had to happen to, to both you and your families, and, you know, we're going to do everything we can to change things here. All the comments here today have been extremely enlightening, and I'm very sorry you've had, had to go through this.
Thank you. And I ask that you guys bring us in, bring us in. I have my, my partner here, Linda White, we're activists in this, in this community, I have Summer here, we are active, you know, we're not, I just don't go to work and go home, I'm active. I want to see Elk Grove stay great, be great, you know? So bring us into the loop, bring us into the conversation. We want to be a part of this. Change has to happen. Thank you so much.
And Sherri, I just want to say, I'd really appreciate that hug, because as much it is for you, it was for me as well. And, you know, when I went through, I felt completely alone, and, you know, having an opportunity to spend time with you, and hearing your perspective, it just kind of reignited everything within me, and, and the feelings that I experienced when I received those hate mail. And so, I feel entirely with you on this, and I share with you at the salon, I'm, I'm behind you, so let's try to figure this out.
Yeah, yeah. And when you shared me, when you shared with me your story about what they said about raping one of your kids, we need to listen to what people are saying. Maya Angelou said, "Believe what people say. When people tell you who they are, believe them." We have to start believing them. And I'm sorry for you, for having to go through everything you went through, also, Mayor. Okay, we stand with you.
Sorry you had to go through that too.
Thank you.
It's not necessary. Thank you. Our next speaker is Elaine Murphy Hassan. Following Elaine is Jennifer Rodriguez.
Eliane Murphy Hassan. Coon Hunt, coming soon. All niggers from Elk Grove going to get you soon. That is a threat, a hate crime and a threat. City Council, Police Department, we need to act on that threat. We cannot let that kind of garbage be disseminated in this community. You cannot, we cannot let hate crime, hate speech, and destruction be disseminated and as, dismissed as youth acting out. You know, we had another salon here in Sacramento, Another Look, who was firebombed, who was firebombed, and was left a hate speech note. We have to take action, we have to look at what's happening, we just cannot keep dismissing it. It's time for the FBI to come in and investigate this as hate crimes in Elk Grove. I know there may be some hesitancy on the police department to do that, but we have enough evidence now to know that we have a problem here in our community. The owner there is asking for a conversation. The Greater Sacramento NAACP is asking for an investigation. We need to look at this very seriously. When people say they're coming for you, we don't have to wait, we shouldn't be waiting until they do that. We need to do that now. The Greater Sacramento NAACP, and I should, probably should have given my title, I am the first vice president for the Greater Sacramento NAACP, we have spoken before you before, looking at diversity in, in Elk Grove, and, and again, all of this comes back around to, to, you know, what we as leaders in this community need to be doing and saying and putting forth, and not just sitting back saying and dismissing these kind of activities as youth pranks. And I know after, I, I know you're all caring people here, I really do know that. And as caring people, we need to carry out action-oriented activities and investigation. This is not the time to sit back, and I know you all know that, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but we do need to act now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have Marcel Wilson, but I think he already spoke, so let's go to Jennifer Rodriguez, and then Jesse Oliver.
My name is Jennifer Rodriguez, I just wanted to express my support for Dream Girls, and how upset I am about this act, although I'm not surprised. You know, as a white person, I just feel, I think white people need to be doing more, all right, to fix this. And I know that if this were a white business, the response would be different. I'm a white person, raising children that are half-Mexican-American, it's given me a unique perspective. It's in our schools, you know, it's, this is obviously egregious, it's often subtle, but racism is, I'm sure you know, alive and well in Elk Grove. Having been a white person for forty years, I just know, and I can see that treatment is different when you're a person of color. I don't want this for my kids, I don't want my kids to grow up in this environment, in this city. And I'm shocked by, there's racism everywhere, but I grew up in the Bay Area, and this whole, you know, Confederate flags, and we're driving down the street with a Confederate flag in the back of our truck. I can't understand that, and I can't understand an environment where people feel comfortable doing that. And I think their discomfort needs to come from the top down, and I think that's where the leadership really needs to step up, and let everyone know that that is not welcome in our city, and that is not what Elk Grove stands for. The way we respond to incidents like this show us, show people how we value them, and what we're telling people of color in Elk Grove, is that we don't value them the same way we value white people. I think the only positive thing that can come from this is if we use this as an impetus to move forward and to make real change, and, you know, obviously, that has to start with some proactive steps from the council. I agree with the idea of having some sort of commission to address this. It's in our schools, and I'm not talking just about other kids, I'm talking about the way school secretaries talk to students, talk to people of color versus talk to white kids. I mean, you can stand in an office and see it, and it's not everybody, but it's there, and it's not hard to see. It's, you know, the fact that, you know, you're sending, my son got worksheets during Black History Month that were fifty years, fifty years old. I'm not kidding, like, the copyright date was on the bottom, using the word negro, not in quotes, but as, like, the main character of this was a negro is one of the choices. Why is that happening? I mean, and who is that acceptable to? I just think we all need to step up. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Jesse Oliver. Following Jesse is Linda White. Jesse, come on down.
My name is Jesse Oliver, I've been down here before, I've talked to you guys a couple of times. The last time, I couldn't make it, July thirteenth, or somewhere around there, there was a car in front of my house parked. I stopped my car, I turned off my lights, the car turned on its lights, turned on its car, rammed it in reverse. They were Asian, I tried to tell the police officers that they were Asian, they didn't do a very good report. I told them, "There's two cameras there," they didn't take a look at the cameras. I told them, "Hey, I'm an audiovisual documentation specialist, I could tell you exactly with my own eyes what the license plate was." And the officer said, "No," he wanted a head-on picture of the license plate. Now, to get something done around here in Elk Grove, it's really hard. I used to work as a letter carrier, I have a whole bunch of different hats, but back in 1978, the Mormon Church decided to let people like me in. I don't go in that church. I tried to go into that church one time, and I was arrested. Nine days, maybe you guys remember that, one of you officers. Nine days, no hearing, no judge, no ticket, no citation, no jury, no nothing. You ever had a gun pointed at your head? It's not fun. Yeah, we got a lot of CIA people here, they're trying to move an agenda, a political agenda that is bad. You guys came out here way long ago, 1607, Pocahontas told you, "Hey, you guys lie a lot, you guys lie a lot." But you know what now? You don't even fill out investigation reports right, you guys don't do investigations, you guys don't write down reports correctly. They're waiting for an audit. I'm waiting to the answers for an audit, so I could send it to somewhere. But that's all I got to say, look, I kept it short this time. One more thing I had to say was, when you guys asked me to lower the flag for Robert Byrd, ping, my ears went up. I went to City Hall, I looked at the flag, and it was half-staff. Broke my heart. I think Laguna should break up with Elk Grove. There's no love lost there.
Linda White. Following Linda is Kobe Eddy.
Thank you all for allowing this dialogue. I speak a lot, I address a lot of different executives, and I do stuff in the community, but this is hard, this is emotional, this is home. My dear friend, sister-partner, Shari and I are active members in the community. In fact, we've hosted an event here at City Hall for teenagers about safe driving, and so we, we thank you all for opening and allowing that opportunity. But here's the thing, we don't want to just come to you in a time of crisis, we don't want to just come to you, and it's good to know that we have that access when it's needed, but also want to see you- all in our community and not just when it's election time. We host sessions for folks who are running for office to have the dialogue with our community, bring our community closer to the conversation so they can understand what's happening and the impact that these potential candidates have on what, you know, what we're faced in our community. My daughter just recently graduated from Kusumna's Oaks. The year before was the incident that the young lady mentioned before I came up here. And even though it wasn't my daughter who had that experience, I immediately emailed the principal and we got on it. I begged and pleaded for them to start at BSU and explained the premise for why that is important, to establish a network for our kids to go to and have positive dialogue and understand the contributions that they can make at school, position them for leadership and in essence, furthering into all the other groups that they have on campus. My daughter was an exceptional student, but for me to get the information, for her to be part of National Honor Society and all the other exclusive clubs was heartbreaking. She wasn't selected to be part of that. And when I asked for it, it was too late. She had missed the deadlines. The way that was communicated to me was just very nasty. So, it's hard for us as parents and then to have to explain these incidents to students. So, as I'm sitting here, my daughter, who's now a student at San Jose State, texted me the very image that was posted about Dreamgirls and she said, "Mom, what the heck is this?" That's what we're facing. Getting pulled over, that's, that's no news, but it's a sad reality of the black residents here in Elk Grove. I have to think about, if I want to get someone's attention on issues, how I look that particular day, because you don't get the same response. How I'm dressed, what I have to wear, is my hair done? If it's pulled back in the ponytail, I'm just the average girl. I don't know anything. And the moment I speak, it's like, "Oh, where did that come from?" Just that natural instinct to be so insulting to us is ridiculous and it's heartbreaking. And yet, we have to tell our kids that you have to be better. You know better. I've taught you better. And as they're getting older and having to face the realities of this world, it is heartbreaking that it's 2017 and we're still dealing with the same stuff. And I have to have different conversations with my kids about how they need to conduct themselves, what they need to know, how they need to approach people, much different than what most of you probably have with your kids. It's that extra conversation that is so unnecessary, but it's the realities in which we live in. And so, I just ask you to please take the time, listen and, and glad to hear that both of you had a moment to spend with Shari and her salon. We need more of that. And as we're hosting events and sending emails and requesting of you all to come and just be part of the fabric of our community, the Elk Grove community, please follow up on that. Please just acknowledge us and let us know that you are interested in what we have to say and what we are doing in the community, because we live here, but we're also very active. And so, I thank you for your time and I look forward to extended dialogue on this as we move forward. We filled out some information when the city was looking for people to be part of what Elk Grove could be. Nothing has happened on that end, but we are here. And there's a network of very exceptional women, moms and kids and fathers like Marcel who are active in the community. So, please just, we ask you to stand with us. We're not looking for handouts or anything special or different, but just a voice and an understanding of what it is that we're dealing with. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Our last speaker is Kobe Eddy. Mr. Eddy.
Hello. My name's Kobe Eddy and I'm a 12th grade student at Sheldon High School. And I'd like to start off with saying that we never, the students at Sheldon specifically, have never understood or even known that these problems were a thing in Elk Grove currently. And I agree with Shari when she says that we need to have a meeting to address these issues. Instead, we need to, somebody needs to tell the schools that the students are welcomed also, because there are students that are willing to be activists for this type of thing. I'm willing to be an activist for this type of thing and I didn't even know any of these issues were existing in Elk Grove at this time. So, that's all I just really wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Eddy. Appreciate it. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, let's go to the next item.
Take us to Section 6, our general administration information.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'd like to start first with the status of the building, utility billing transition. As you'll recall, Republic Services took over the utility billing services as of July the 1st, 2017. Unfortunately, technical difficulties with the transition has resulted in building, billing delays and customer complaints. And in some instances, customers have been placed on hold for extended periods of time, which is a violation of the response standards in our contract with Republic Services. City staff has requested a response plan from Republic Services that is due this week. Republic has indicated that the plan will include two additional employees that have been hired and will be trained by next week. Republic will not charge late fees for the remainder of the calendar year. There will be free extra trash pickups provided during the holiday months of November, December, and additional outreach will be conducted through phone calls, bill inserts, ads in the Elk Grove Citizen and outreach events. My understanding is Tony Cicada, the General Manager for Republic, is in the audience to answer questions if needed. And in fact, I'm gonna, if Tony is still here, I'd like to invite him if you'd like to say a few words. Yeah, thank you.
How you doing, Tony?
Hi, Mayor Lee, council members. So, as Laura indicated, you know, we had taken over billing for over 48,000 accounts here in the city of Elk Grove. We did, you know, that massive transition of data from the city's billing system to our billing system, did have some unforeseen challenges. So, you know, the, our first billing was a little over three weeks late, so I think there was some confusion around that. And also, we had a lot more call volume than we anticipated. And even on certain days, five times normal call volume at our call center. So, we had staffed up for this. We had three, three additional reps to take on the additional volume, but we didn't anticipate it being five times our normal volume. So, we had done a lot of outreach with the city on the front end, hoping that folks would, would see that. So, what we're planning on doing is we're bringing on an additional two staff member be ready to go next Monday, recruiting an additional two behind that for the next billing period. We'll also have call blasts going out to customers explaining who we are and why they're getting bills from us, ads in the Elk Grove Citizen, and also every citizen in the city of Elk Grove will receive a mailer from us explaining what's going on, why they're getting bills from us. And we hope with all this outreach that the, the call volume will go down. So, we're staffing up, doing extra outreach and also, you know, we're gonna be equipped next billing cycle for overflow of calls to go to a call center that's off-site, so I don't foresee the same problem happening again. Because the majority of the volume happens, you know, customers get their bills and then they, they have questions. So, the majority of the volume is in that week period after folks receive their bills. So, on behalf of the company, you know, I apologize about our performance in this and it's not up to my standards and up to the, the folks in Elk Grove's standards. And I just want you to know that we're doing everything we can to, to make it right with folks. And we're also gonna have free extra pickups for everybody's patients through November and December. And also, we're gonna set up some kind of holiday recycling program for folks to bring by additional boxes and things like that, just, just as a goodwill gesture from, from the company. So, is, any questions from council? I'm here to answer anything you got, so, okay.
Just, Tony, just appreciate you coming down here, understanding our concerns that have been raised by residents and, and city staff and all of us in your effort to try to resolve this. So, thank you.
Did I hear you right, Tony? You said there'll be free additional pickups for residents?
Yes. So, through, through November and December, folks can put out up to three bags per week and we'll go ahead and pick that up, just, you know, we appreciate everybody being patient with us. And so, we figured we'd add a little extra service.
Will there be a notice that will be sent out in the mail?
Yes. So, that'll be included in the, the billing notice that'll be sent out beginning of November. So, folks can take advantage of that program and we'll be, we'll be ready to get the extra stuff for them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your patience with us.
Thank you, Tony. Next, to let you know about the community outreach that is associated with the multimodal facility feasibility study, that will continue on Thursday with the second community open house that's scheduled for 6:00 here in council chambers. This meeting will share the public feedback received so far and present draft feasibility study findings. Residents unable to attend the meeting can comment online through the Open City Hall Discussion Forum through September the 21st. Also, it's the season for homecoming and Franklin High School will host the first of the city's homecoming parades in East Franklin this Friday. Road closures and detours near the high school will be in effect from 1:30 to 3:00. Police officers will assist with traffic controls and detours during the event. A reminder that this Saturday, the city's Youth Commission will host the Second Annual Party on the Palms Team Fest. It'll be, again, this Saturday evening from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in front of City Hall. This teens-only event is free for students ages 13 to 18 and will feature live DJ music, a social media lounge, gaming truck and more. A valid high, a valid school ID is required for entry. Details are available on the city's website. Also, for your four-legged friends, we like, we would invite the, the four-legged friends and their owners to join the city's Animal Services Unit on Saturday, September 23rd from 11:00 to 3:00 at Elk Grove Regional Park for an event featuring raffles, onsite vendors, an agility course and Elk Grove Pets Talent Show. Also, another chance to join the Elk Grove Movement is coming on Friday, October 13th, where we will have a zombie tag game, the City for Stay Alive, a live-action zombie tag game at Elk Grove Regional Park. Registration is required and limited to the first 500 participants. Moving to the citywide initiatives update regarding the general plan update, the first community workshop on the Triangle area was held last night and the next meeting will be held in November. With regard to the Civic Center, the public, with public art, proposals have been reviewed by the review committee that is comprised of the city's Committee for the Arts and city staff. That committee has made preliminary selections. Follow-up with the selected artists is expected to occur over the next several weeks with the final recommendation being presented to the city council in November. With regard to the Capital Southeast Connector Joint Powers Authority, from grant line from Mosher to Bradshaw, the JPA staff continues to coordinate with the city on design elements and phasing of improvements and is starting the right-of-way acquisition process. With the section of grant line from Waterman to Mosher, the city's consultant continues design work with the adjacent JPA Design Section. The city has approved interim and ultimate phasing concepts and the 35% design plans are under review by both the city and the JPA. With regard to camera road widening and extension, the Capital Southeast Connector JPA has set an alignment after meeting with property owners and has begun updates to existing environmental studies. The city continues to work and coordinate with the JPA. Recent discussions have focused on geometric details and the upcoming Infra Grant, which is a federal grant program, and other funding opportunities for the project. With regard to the animal shelter, the Committee for the Arts has reviewed the project and has developed recommendations for public art. These recommendations will be brought to the city council at its next meeting. The project is on schedule with construction starting in the spring of 2018 and completion before June of 2019. And that completes the report for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, comments? No? Okay. Start with Councilmember Wayne.
You know, I, I'd like to talk about the members of the public that came to speak today rather than give my report out. Many of them have already left. I see a few still here. First, I want, I want to say that we appreciate them coming and speaking to us. And there were a lot of things that were asked and there were a lot of requests that were made. And we can't, we cannot fix all of it tonight and we cannot all address everything tonight. However, one of the things I'd like to maybe ask the council in support of is that Councilmember Hume and I are already a part of a two-by-two that is a diverse city ad hoc committee and that maybe we push this so that Councilmember Hume and I can continue this dialogue with a lot of the members that were here tonight that spoke, that have also been a part of the community meetings that we hosted and that we continue that dialogue with them in putting town hall meetings together, pulling in our Elk Grove Police Department in, on it as well too, in a way to continue this dialogue. Because this isn't something that we can fix overnight. This isn't something we're gonna fix in one week or a month. It's gonna be a continuous thing. And so, I'd like to maybe ask the council if that's something that you consider. We, you know, we talked about DACA, immigration, sanctuary city, all of that, I think we can combine into this ad hoc committee and bring it to the community so that there's a full dialogue and a discussion.
So, I would, I would definitely be open to that. I'll just expand on, on some of those comments. I think if, if we're gonna have, you know, a conversation, a real conversation, then let's talk about it from all angles, because we represent up here, we represent all segments of the community. And so, I think one of the speakers mentioned earlier, other different ethnicities that may, may be having some issues. And so, I think, and I don't mean just minorities. So, I think it's a, if it's a conversation how we're all gonna live together better and be better human beings to one another, then, you know, I'm, I'm definitely in support of that. You know, I personally would like to understand how we reach people who don't want to be reached, because I believe there's so many good intentioned people in this city and I believe those are the people that will show up. So, how do we, how do we, you know, for lack of a better term, educate these others that, that don't seem to want to be inclusive or want to accept that we are a diverse community, that we are all human beings with the same struggles in life and feelings, families, and all just trying to make a better lives for ourselves and our families? So, that's, that's something I want to do. But also, with our school district. So, how can we get our school district there? And for, you know, I, I forget who, who made the comment, but I, it's, it's difficult when you have to understand governance. We, we don't have any authority over the school district, the state. They, we are a city, they are the state. We're not allowed on their property. Our officers are not allowed on their property. We work closely together, however, we have a good relationship with them. But I think, you know, there is a dividing line. And so, we have to have, we'll continue to reach out. When the mayor talked about it earlier, we reached out before. We'll continue to reach out. But I, I think it's a better conversation if they're, they're with us. And, and then finally, maybe we get some, you know, professional help for facilitating that kind of conversation, because I think there's a lot of aspects to it. It's not a, you know, if, if roots truly run deep on this issue, then we're, we're gonna need all the help and all the support from the community, our level, professionals, staff, to have a robust and honest dialogue where, you know, it might be rough at first, but we leave all the better off for it, so.
Well, my, my thought is, you know, obviously, I think you're on the right track, but I wouldn't say defer everything over to a committee, because I think, I remember when I was an activist, that's one of the frustration, frustrating things to do is to raise an issue and then have everything be kicked over to a committee that may disappear. So, I guess the general answer is yes, I would support that with some qualification. And in terms, in response to Councilman Sins' comment in regards to school, I think one way to solve that really is to pull in school board members and as a part of this town hall meeting that I hall meeting that I have heard some of the members of the public mention. And so, yes, we're not exerting our authority over them, which we don't have the right to do, but there's no reason why we can bring school board members and council members to a town hall meeting and have these real discussions. And so that's my sense of it. And so, you know, I'd say discuss and continue. My only concern is whether the diversity committee right now is sufficient to what the members of the public are asking. You know, they're asking for a real conversation that is going to open up wounds. And is the diversity, the, what are we calling the current committee? Is it diversity committee? Is that what we're calling it? Yeah, is the diverse committee sufficiently prepared to open up these wounds and have these serious conversations? I'm not sure. And if we are going to go in that direction, I think that, and Darren hit the nail right on it, is we probably need to pull in some experts, you know, to lead the discussion. But I think it's critical that all of us are there as well. Because I want to hear from the community. I want to hear these stories that are untold, either it be in the streets of Elk Grove or on the school campuses. But as a part of that, I want the school board members to be a part of it as well. Pass me.
Thank you, Mayor. You actually encapsulated a lot of thoughts that I was just having as a member of the diversity committee. I'm willing to pursue this path even though I just learned of it about three minutes ago. But I think only as a catalyst to a larger effort. And I think it absolutely has to involve the school district. I think it absolutely has to involve members of the community. But I think, and I saw him just a second ago, but he ducked back out of here, it has to involve the students to find out if they're doing these things because they're idiots and don't know any better, or if they're doing these things because they got hate in their heart that needs to get weaned out of there.
Absolutely, yeah.
So I think you've got to engage those young people, find out where they are, where their heads at. I was going to speak to this more during council comments, but, and I hope we're not running afoul of discussing this item too much. You know, this is a, it's a painful situation. It's a painful to have to take a hard look at yourselves. And, you know, having grown up in Elk Grove, I remember when there was no covert about it. Elk Grove was a pretty much redneck cowtown, you know, good old boy. And I thought we had moved past that. And I just want to say something real quick to the folks that think that we intimated or suggested that a multicultural festival is some sort of panacea to cure interracial communi, relations. Not at all. But what it is to do is to celebrate the multicultural diversity in Elk Grove. But I just want to read something. It's a proclamation ironically from almost one year ago. And it says, "Declaring Elk Grove no place for hate, whereas the City of Elk Grove Multicultural Committee was charged by the city council to educate the community about the city of Elk Grove's cultural diversity and to advise the city on best practices for conducting outreach to various ethnic communities and faith-based organizations in Elk Grove. And the city of Elk, and whereas the city of Elk Grove wishes to ensure that everyone is welcomed within its borders and that the city will protect and preserve the rights, freedoms, safety, and security of all its residents. And whereas as a multi-ethnic community, the city of Elk Grove recognizes the dignity of all its residents, the diverse contributions of both immigrants and native-born residents, and the importance of preserving and protecting this diversity. And whereas the city of Elk Grove celebrates its rich multicultural heritage without the fear of intimidation or hate-motivated violence against its residents, now therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the city of Elk Grove is no place for hate and the city council rejects, discourages, and disproves of any hate-based activity or conduct directed to harm a person due to a person's immutable characteristics." That's great on paper. We need to put it into action. And so if this starts that dialogue, I absolutely agree with bringing in a professional, but I think we need to consult with the community. We need to engage the multicultural committee since they were charged with that task and obviously bring diverse viewpoints to things. But what happened is absolutely inexcusable and intolerable. And again, Cherry just came back into the room, but I want to commend her for her strength in something that might have sent lesser people wanting to cower and instead she shines a light on it. And also to your friend who put it onto Facebook and said, "Look, this happened to a good person and it shouldn't." And so thank you guys for coming out and raising this awareness and I hope we can continue the dialogue. I hope we can have that discussion that you asked for. And it's going to be uncomfortable, it's going to be picking at some wounds, but I hope we come out of it all the better. But I want to ask you, and I'm glad you came back in, Chief. There's been some talk about the police response to this and I know, but I'd like for you to say, we are taking this seriously and it is under investigation.
That's exactly correct. We, in fact, we responded immediately. I think we got to the call within five minutes of being dispatched. In fact, I was just speaking with Mrs. Thompson out in the lobby about her impression of Officer McCambe, who was the responding officer. So he responded immediately, took all the information that would have been appropriate and expected initially. We've since assigned a detective who was out today. So the case is assigned and we are investigating it as a hate crime unless something suggests that we need to handle it another way. Because that's on its face what it, what it looks like. So we are, as part of that case, we're stand, you know, following standard protocol to look at securing any digital evidence that may exist, any evidence on the notes themselves, interviewing people in the area and, you know, we, I mean, it sounds woefully inadequate against the backdrop of some of the really heartfelt comments that we heard earlier, but we are working very diligently on this case.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to add that the feedback that I got from the community members in regards to Officer McCambe is above and beyond. He took it and he ran with it. And, you know, and that just makes me proud that we have officers like McCambe who hustled. And it was because of his hustle that got all this attention. So, yeah, thank you, Chief. Want to continue with your report?
No, but I think that's it. I just wanted to, you know, I really believe that the members that spoke tonight want to see the council take action. I don't, I really feel that if we, as a committee, engage them and find out, we can't have this discussion right here, right now. We'd be here all night and we still wouldn't be able to solve anything. I think it's an ongoing discussion and that we need to engage the folks that were here tonight and work with them on getting other community members to attend this bigger town hall meeting. I'm not saying having this committee and having the 10 people that attended our diversity meeting, but I'm saying having them as change agents and helping us to outreach out to the larger community. And even the young gentleman that was here as well, too, at Sheldon High School. And I agree, I think we need to tie in the school district as well, too. And maybe it's Councilmember Hume and I or anybody else, any other two individuals that's interested. And we tie in members of the school board as well to have this discussion about how we can work on this together. Because it was said earlier today, and I'm a huge believer that it has to start as a young age and we have to educate the individuals, especially at the times when they're in high school and they don't know about a lot of things that are going on. And the gentleman that spoke earlier, he was, you know, he attested to that. And so I want to make sure that we were having this dialogue with the school, but that we're tying in the parents and the individuals that spoke tonight to guide us on what they want to see happen and how they want to see it happen. And like Councilmember Suen said earlier, you know, it's all the communities' religious background and all of that as well, too. And we have to, we're very diverse here and it's not going to end unless we do something like that.
Let's add in CSD in that conversation, too.
CSD would be great.
You know, the other thing that I want to add is, you know, since we're talking on this subject matter, there was a request by one of the members of the public, and I kind of lost track, it may have been Mr. Shergill, asking for a resolution solidifying our position. And my first thought is, why don't we take what we have and, you know, compile it with what, the language that he's suggesting and maybe bring it back to council? I need a consensus for that.
So I like the first part of your suggestion. If you want to refresh the resolution that we've had and strengthen the language of that...
We can take a look at it. My thought here is just delegate staff and take a look at it and having something a little bit stronger. And it's always good to refresh our resolution and that will give us an opportunity to send it forward. Let's say the discussion is open, obviously, you know, send it to staff, staff brings it back and we'll discuss it.
Well, that, the proclamation that Councilman Hume read, you know, if we add some verbiage to it, that, I mean, that could in some ways serve as a pseudo-charter, if you will, to what we're about to embark on, too. I mean, it's a, where it's actually, you know, an aspirational statement that proclamation could be, so that'd be okay by me. But I think what, what we did nearly a year ago is a great place to start.
Right, absolutely. I mean, go in the right direction. We don't have a perfect answer and this comment is to benefit the community as well. And Councilmember Hume highlighted this specifically on the multicultural festival. Look, our suggestion is that's a starting point, that's a foundation, but if we had all the answers, we wouldn't need the members of the public. And I can tell you that going in this direction and getting this kind of feedback is beneficial. And, you know, I like the tone and the direction in which we want to go, which is, you could get more feedback. But a multicultural festival, or multicultural committee, was in response to, you know, incidents that occurred five or six years ago as well. And so the council before me had a great intention, they had a vision in which they were headed. And, you know, I don't want to disregard their effort. And of course, members of the multicultural committee as well, there's a folks who work very hard to try to engage the community. It's not, their, not sole purpose is just to do the multicultural festival and I want to acknowledge that. So we have a consensus to bring back, a resolution for council consideration. The language has been sent to us, so I'm assuming that, Jason, you have a copy of that?
I think that direct...
I don't, but I think I can get my hands on it.
Okay.
Contact Mr. Shergill as well.
Yeah, but I'm hearing, we're starting with our proclamation that we just heard, right? That's what I'm...
Yeah, I think my interest is, you know, to take this proclamation that we had about a year ago, strengthen it a little bit more so with some of the language that Mr. Shergill has suggested. And so come back with a strong, you're shaking your head, no? You wanted something more?
No.
Why don't you come up here?
I think, I think what you said is great to embark on this new project with fresh language. I think to conflate the two, you might actually make the job more difficult. I think the resolution you all agreed upon stands on its own and addresses a very specific issue and some very bigoted statements. And then you should move forward afresh, starting with that language from a year ago to address the conversation that you had today. I think to conflate the two, you're probably going to have a different time.
Your thought is to bring something entirely separate in addition to what we already have? And I'm fine with that, I would support that. I just need consensus on the council.
I think, to clarify what I said, go with the language you've already agreed upon, that resolution that you...
By the ones that have been signed that's out there, is that what?
Right, yeah. The one from the joint statement with the Elk Grove council, council members and the school board members that everybody agrees upon, to bring that back as a standalone resolution that addressed one very specific issue and then do something separate, I think, really, given the conversation that went on today.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I just need support.
So that's two separate, we're asking for two separate ones in addition to what we already have here?
Well, one way to approach that is, we already had it, we can renew it, you know, and reaffirm it. And then Mr. Shergill's requesting stronger language along the incident that took place in Virginia.
But it's very similar to this wording. I'm not understanding why we can't combine what we all signed on and refresh this and make it all one.
So I'd rather, I'd rather stick with that one that we did there and that's it, personally. Though I was reminded of what we, I think we, I think we communicated a great sentiment through that proclamation. So either we stick with that and we could add some or that's it.
I think Councilmember Suen's right, is that you stick with that because you've agreed upon it and then bring the community in to look at the language that you want to start the next conversation with.
So what I'm hearing, if that's the case and we were to go in that direction, that would mean that this is a community discussion in terms of the language in which you have submitted, suggested to us, not necessarily return back for a consideration of a resolution. Is that...
I'm not sure if we're, if we're saying the same thing. I was agreeing with Councilmember Suen that you have language, you bring it back and you just ratify what you already have agreed upon?
Okay.
Right, so that's done. And then start fresh saying, you know, what are the language that we need given the conversation that we've had today and that process going forward.
I think my interest is to look at the suggestion that you have provided. That was what my was going and...
I don't think you have council agreement on that.
I think, yeah, what he's saying and Councilmember Suen's saying is the same thing, I think, right? Is what I'm hearing.
What I'm saying is that proclamation, we can clarify.
Yes.
Right. And then, you know, maybe add some of your language if we need to to that. But that will be our proclamation going forward to emphasize the sentiment of this council. By action, we're about to embark on a conversation and the conversation is put lightly, frankly, because I think this is, it's going to take some time because there's a lot to talk about and there's a lot of, I think, education that needs to go on. So I'm, to me, I'm more about the action than the words. So I'm happy to re-adopt or revise and re-adopt that proclamation, but the actions that we're about to embark on with this council with the conversation, I think, is more powerful and more telling than any resolution we could adopt. So I'm trying to accommodate, Mr. Shergill, what your request is in what we've already adopted through this proclamation and the actions that we're about to take. And that, for me, that's what I'm, as far as I'm willing to go for words. I'm just tired of words, like a lot of folks that spoke tonight. So let's do something.
Well, I'll respond if you'd like. I'm not sure what you, what you want from me now. But what I was saying is that you all agreed upon language regarding President Trump's giving harbor, safe harbor to bigots Nazi KKK. That should now be turned into a resolution, which is the statement of this council, so that nobody can ever say that you were silent on that?
Right.
And which is completely separate from whatever we're working on today.
And we weren't silent. I mean, I said it in the video, I denounced it in the video, I, it was, the letter we all signed on to was published in the paper, it was published online.
So what I'm hearing is, I don't have a consensus, so we can move on? Shall we just do that? Because we don't want to belabor this.
I want to have, I want to start having the conversation. I'm done with resolutions if it's not going to do anything.
All right, okay.
So I want to have a conversation.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Hume?
Back to council comments?
Yeah, are you done?
No, I'm not done. I haven't even got to...
I think you're done with me, right?
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Shergill.
Unfortunately, my phone died and so it took with it my calendar that had all the places that I've been. So I've tried to reconstruct as much as I can from memory. I attended and testified at the Assembly Government Organizational Committee on behalf of AB 1606, the compact for the Wilton Rancheria Tribe. Attended the multicultural festival and the Key to the City programs, a great event, very well attended, it was wonderful to be there. Attended the celebration dinner put on by Capitol, great event, great folks. Had two different RT meetings, but neither one of them had anything of Elk Grove significance. Had a Connector JPA meeting, again, nothing necessarily of Elk Grove significance. Had a Laughco meeting, the Cameron Road, or Cameron SOI Draft Environmental Impact Report is being recirculated. Attended the discussion last night on the Triangle area. Christopher Jordan, who just, in good timing, just happened to walk in the room, did a wonderful job of leading that meeting and we look forward to the next series of meetings on that. Had a sandboard meeting this morning, nothing of specific to Elk Grove, but I will say this, that we invested in a study, it was about a million-dollar study that the sanitation district paid a little over $400,000 to help fund, that tracked the decline of phytoplankton within the river system. And it did so in a method where it essentially floats with the, what they called a water parcel down the river, measures the water parcel above where the treatment enters the river, down to below where the treatment enters the river. And what it found, which is significant with respect to the multibillion-dollar upgrade that we're doing to our sewer treatment plant, is that the ammonia in the river did not have a noticeable effect on the, on the growth and life of phytoplankton. They took a significant decline before they actually even reach the outfall station. So there's still an issue there, but it's not necessarily one that, we now have good information going forward when it comes time to get a new permit, new discharge permit. Then I had the Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee meeting this afternoon with Councilmember Suen, myself. Daryl Doan did a great job of walking us through a couple of things and so appreciated that. And that's it, thank you.
Councilman Suen?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, I'll just start with...
Well, I'll just start with, just quickly, we had our STA Budget Committee, the Library Authority Budget Committee, and a SECOG Land Use Natural Resources Committee. Tomorrow's our SECOG Board Meeting, and Friday, American Leadership Forum Session. And, you know, I just, we, I think, a lot of the, through the previous, Councilmember Wynn and Councilmember Hume's comments, I think covered a lot of things that I wanted to talk about. I do want to also thank all the, all the speakers that came forward tonight, and especially Cherie and Michelle, again, thank you for your words. And I guess I just want, I do want to add about the, you know, my personal belief is as a leader, we need to, we need to bring the community together, and this conversation, as we talked about, we're gonna, we're gonna do that, but I just, the, trying to stay positive and hopeful is what are, also, our role is, in my opinion, and so, but I don't want that mistaken for lack of wanting to acknowledge, so it just wanted to clarify that. But also to the point of our, of our residents, I wanted to ask the council also, another, another thing that puts our residents at risk is the, is the recent DACA decision, and it puts youth, young adults, who could be good productive members of the community at risk, and so, to that end, you know, there was, there was talk tonight about an effort going on between legal services and, and, excuse me, nonprofits, religious groups, under the Fuel Network, the Families United Education and Legal Services for Immigration. So I wanted to see if there's council support to have staff explore a partnership with them to help with statistically could be a couple thousand residents here that could be affected, and wanted to see if there was support for that.
And, and before we have the discussion, I do want to disclose, and for transparency purposes, I was an advocate for the Fuel Network when it came up to Sacramento City Council, so to advocate for funds. I am a part of the network and the collaborative, so any funds that go to them possibly can go to an organization that I represent and work for. So if there's discussions around doing such a thing with the Fuel Network, I would need to step out of the room for that, for that discussion.
Yes, in light of that, to address Councilmember Wynn's comments, she would need to recuse herself from those discussions, couldn't participate in that decision to contribute funds or other support towards the Fuel Network in light of her employment, there's a potential indirect interest in that, given her employment.
Okay.
Can she, and, well, let me just, what do you guys feel about that?
Yeah, no, I, I would certainly be in support of it, the exploration of it. There's a conversation that stemmed out of my, in a discussion with a number of community members, including Mr. Fabrizio, who was here earlier. But my thought here is, I'd like to direct staff to explore the possibility of partnership, and what sort of commitment that would look like from Elk Grove's part, but, you know, obviously that would have to come for a deeper discussion later on.
So I'm okay with that, I'm familiar with DACA, I'm familiar with the President's recent action that gives a six-month window for Congress to act. I guess I would need to see, is there a workforce nexus to this, or, so I'd need to know more about the program and where the funding goes.
That would exactly be my vision, and absolutely, I think that's where, right now, if, if you would indulge me, we would just, that's what we would have staff explore, what that partnership would look like, any measurable objectives for any funding that we would provide, and then for our consideration.
And I think my understanding is, there's a lot of flexibility in it, and so we wanted to attach a workforce development, you know, component to it, we certainly can, but, you know, obviously, I want to leave it to the expert and have staff have a conversation with, with the network and try to figure something out and bring it before us. Okay, we have a consensus?
Good.
Okay.
Okay. All right, all right. Bring back Councilman Wynn. Okay, do you have anything additional to report, Councilman Swin?
Apologies, yeah, I'm done. Thanks, sorry.
I had the opportunity to participate in the multicultural festival with, with all of us, actually. The only person who's missing was actually out of country, so we forgave him. But nonetheless, we all participated in the Key to the City, had an opportunity to participate in the Mayor's Roundtable with all the mayors in the region, took part in the Portal Park opening, had an opportunity to take part in the Labor Day picnic, participated in the Veterans 911 Job Fair, which was being hosted by Volunteers of America, and also posts 233. And just yesterday, had an opportunity to talk with some community members about establishing an association in a neighborhood watch program. So I want to extend a thank you to Laura and her staff, specifically Darren Wilson for coming out, and also to the chief and your crime prevention team. They were all in force, and the neighbors were very happy that we had such a strong show of force. And I think that is it for me. Yeah, that's it, okay, next item.
Take us to Section 8, our consent calendar items.
Okay, at this point, I want to open public comment, and I see that Ms. Lynn Wheat has signed up to speak on 8.10. Ms. Wheat, why don't you come on up?
Thank you. I was looking forward to hearing a report tonight from staff on this, as it was postponed from our last meeting, but I did discover who the stakeholder was that needed to meet with staff, and that was the Dart Container Corporation. So it sounds like they had a meeting, and even to have some notes from the meeting or something attached to this, instead of having it within the consent item, would have been helpful. But I'm glad to know that if you're a company, Dart Container Corporation, that you can influence how we act on our adopted climate action plan. Thank you.
Okay, seeing that there are no additional speakers, I want to close public comment, council deliberation and direction.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion for consent, but I want to make just a couple of items on it, didn't need to pull anything.
Okay, go ahead.
But for item 8.6 and 8.7, I just want to congratulate the city for doing business locally, we're purchasing some vehicles from Elk Grove Ford, and so I'm happy to see that, that's been a long time coming, and so, good job on that. And then with item 8.11, it's not necessarily related to declaring the project complete, but I did notice upon driving by there the other day that appears the backside of our restrooms have already been tagged. And so, to a larger issue with that, I have an inquiry, because it crosses my mind every time I see it, there's another spot I can think of where I've seen some tagging on a little, like a sprinkler valve or something. If I were to go and buy paint of the same color as the original background and spray over tagging, is that illegal? Am I setting myself up for a bad situation?
Technically, I think the city should respond to those-
Okay.
-with cover-up. I know that's a, that's a bit of a vague answer, but I suppose application of paint on any property that's owned by someone else could, you know, technically speaking, be considered to be vandalism, although I don't know that anyone would object.
And so to whom would I direct those? Would I direct it to Shane's apartment? Okay.
Yeah, we work closely with Shane and his code enforcement crew to handle those, so that could either go to Shane or to us, either way, we'd get it taken care of.
Okay.
We've made a note of the bathroom already.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion? We have a second? All right, motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention. All right, next item.
Take us to Section 9, our public hearing, starting with item 9.1, which is public hearing to consider an ordinance establishing voluntary development impact fees for I-5 subregional corridor transportation improvements and adoption of a resolution accepting the Nexus study for those fees and that program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Rick Carter, your Capital Program Manager. Before I begin, I would like to introduce, in the audience behind me, is Marlon Flornoy. He is the Caltrans District 3 Deputy Director, and he will speak a little bit at the end of my presentation. And sitting next to him is John Long, the Consulting Engineer at DKS, who prepared the Nexus study we are hoping to have accepted this evening. So Caltrans initiated this process way back in 2007. They brought together cities at Elk Grove, Sacramento, and West Sacramento, along with themselves and SECOG, in an attempt to address impacts of new development projects on the mainline freeway. With the downturn in the economy, the work was put on hiatus until about 2013, so there was a length of time where there wasn't much going on with this. But what the I-5 subregion covers is shown here on the map. Despite the name, it includes I-5, State Route 99, Highway 50, and Business 80, and covers portions of City Sacramento, West Sac, and Elk Grove. Back in June of 2014, the three cities signed an MOU with SECOG and Caltrans that covered preparation of the Nexus study, a supplemental environmental impact report, and an implementation plan. There's a working group set up with the four, excuse me, the five partners, they prepared a draft environmental impact report, it went through the full SEQA compliance, and in August of 2015, SECOG adopted and certified the final EIR. At about that same time, the city began engagement with our industry working group on the fee program, and they've been engaged since then. In January of 2016, the final Nexus study was completed. In April of 16, the City of Sacramento adopted voluntary fee. In May of this year, City of West Sacramento also adopted the voluntary fee, and it kind of leads us to today, with us here as the last of the three agencies to consider this. So the reasoning behind development impact fee, freeways in our region are significantly congested during peak periods, and new growth adds additional delay. SEQA requires development projects mitigate, to the extent feasible, their transportation impacts unless they fit into a variety of exemptions that are covered in, statutorily for SEQA. So typically, projects analyze direct and cumulative impacts per SEQA. We typically have kind of three outcomes of that analysis. They come to a conclusion that there is no impact, and thus no mitigation required. It can determine that there is an impact and identify feasible mitigations, or it can also identify that there are impacts and there are no feasible mitigations. Some, some projects in Elk Grove in the past have identified impacts to the mainline freeway, but determined that there was no feasible mitigation, in part based on a lack of right of way and an ability to expand the freeway system. Caltrans has challenged that last finding on occasion, arguing there are feasible mitigations, and this has led to delays in projects, added costs for the projects, and the projects having to negotiate with Caltrans to mitigate those impacts. So this program was essentially developed as a voluntary, cost-effective, equitable, and predictable approach to mitigating the impacts of new development on the freeway system. Essentially, we're looking at as a method to comply with SEQA, as well as resolve Caltrans' concerns with their facilities as a facility owner. So what does the fee do? It adds an option to mitigate those impacts, it establishes a predictable fair share in lieu fee payment. As part of this, it also establishes Caltrans' agreement that paying the identified fee will adequately mitigate the mainline impacts under SEQA, also removes a requirement from Caltrans to analyze cumulative freeway impacts if they, if someone opts to pay the fee. I would point out, it's important to recognize that should a project elect to pay the fee, it doesn't mean that they will do no traffic impacts, they may have to, or no traffic study, they may have to look at local roads, they may also have to look at the interchange ramp, local road connection, but do avoid having to analyze mainline impacts. So part of this is, what does the fee not do? It doesn't preclude a project from going through the environmental process, determining that there are no significant impacts to be mitigated, nor does it force them into paying the fee. If they identify significant impacts, they can still address those impacts in any other way allowed by SEQA. I started this out essentially as what the slide with, what projects are subject, subject to the fee, and it was really simpler to discuss what's not subject to the fee. Again, any project without an impact, no reason to pay the fee, there's nothing to be mitigated. Project that mitigates in other ways would, you know, not look to pay the fee, they've found some other more equitable, or more economic way to cover it. As I noted, there are a variety of statutory exemptions from mitigating traffic impacts. Those include certain transit projects, qualified housing, affordable low-income housing, or infill developments. So even if the project were to have some sort of an impact under SEQA, they're not required to mitigate. Next is projects that have existing SEQA approvals and no further discretionary approvals by the city. So existing approved project, they, they're basically, got their approvals in advance of an adoption of this fee program, and they wouldn't be subject to it. The one caveat is, if they have a development agreement that identifies payment of this fee or some other agreement, then obviously it's overridden by an agreement that the development project has signed up to. There is a threshold of significance related to this, so that small minor projects are not cut into this. What it is, it's 100 peak hour vehicle trip ends. There is a table on page 183 of the staff report that identifies the size of various projects that fall underneath that 100-vehicle threshold. Just a sampling of those, 100 houses generates 100 trip ends, 6,900 square feet of commercial generates 100 trip ends, 64,000 square feet of office generates 100 trip ends. So if they're under that limit, then they're not really subject to this, they don't have to address mitigating those impacts. If they're over, they can, if they desire, in lieu of paying the fee, go into full analysis to see if they have a significant impact, because they could still be over this and not have a significant impact, depending on the project and location and various details. The last item here is existing SEQA-approved projects that are revised, which increase vehicle, peak hour vehicle trip ends by not more than 10%. This was something that was a concern both with the city and the industry, and discussions with Caltrans, we have approved projects, sometimes there's minor changes to them, sometimes the city requests minor changes to improve traffic flow and circulation, and we didn't want to have that sort of a minor change trigger something on a project that's already set, and so, Caltrans agrees that that's a very reasonable, a reasonable approach, and that's included in our ordinance. So part of the action tonight is to accept the Nexus study. So the Nexus creates the tie between the mitigation and the projects and the fee. What the Nexus includes is specific identified transit, local road, and freeway improvements, which reduce the demand on the mainline freeway. Those projects are in the SECOG MTPSCS, they're consistent with our general plan. There is, as I mentioned, there's a specific list of projects, it may be amended from time to time by amending the Nexus study, as is done with typical fee programs. It also sets the fair share allocation, basically determines the fee, that is based on the additional congested vehicle miles traveled. It's important to point out, because this fee involved three different cities, the fee and the revenue are proportional to the freeway impact within each city, so no city is subsidizing any other city. The fee is also set proportional to the land use, and so, the impacts associated with a residential use, the fee is proportional to those impacts, so you don't have any land use subsidizing another land use. And each of the three cities modeled the actual fee rates according to their own system within Elk Grove- Within Elk Grove, we aligned it with our roadway fee, so the categories match the roadway When you look at the specific projects that are identified in the Nexus study, for Elk Grove's share, it identifies about 42 million in projects. That includes $6 million for the multimodal station, $10 million for the bus rapid transit. The names that are used in the study are those that match the MTP, so there's a little difference. 12 million for Cammer, and then 14 million that covers improvements on I-5 and 99 that are within the Elk Grove region. So these fees would fund a portion of the cost of these projects, but they'll also help leverage state and federal transportation funds. So these are the proposed fee rates. I sort of highlighted here on the slide the kind of the benchmark categories that are often referred to. Again, these are based on congested VMT. They're proportional to the impact. Within the Nexus study, we worked with Secog, identified sources of Secog funding to cover some of this, so the rates that are here are actually 30% of the maximum allowable because of the other available funding. I think it's also important to note that the fee program is set up that Elk Grove collects the revenue. It's collected by Elk Grove, it's held by Elk Grove. Elk Grove controls the priorities for those expenditures. There are, as I noted before, there are improvements on the Caltrans facilities, and we would work with Caltrans on funding those when needed, but if our priority were Cammer, we're able to make that our priority. So one of the comments that we had was a comment that expectation that Caltrans would cover all the mainline improvements, and a sense of who else is, you know, who else has in their fee program improvements to cover the mainline. So this table is one of four that are attached to your staff report that describes some of the local agencies in the region that include mainline freeway impact projects into their fee program. As noted earlier, Sacramento and West Sac have already adopted the fee. El Dorado County and Folsom have their own fees, and then the South Placer Regional Transportation Authority has its own fee that covers Placer County, Roseville, Rockland, and Leakon. As you can see, this table covers single-family residential, and the fee in the city of Elk Grove is at the higher end of that, which is not unexpected, given the commute patterns and how the fee is established based on impact. This is one of the other four tables, given this comparison. This is retail, commercial, and as you can see, Elk Grove is down near the bottom, and again, that's because of our typical kind of commute patterns and the job housing balance here. So the next steps, if this were approved this evening, the ordinance would have a second reading at the next city council meeting, and then the ordinance would take effect 60 days after that, which could be as early as November 27. Before I take questions, I'd like to invite Marlin Florin from Caltrans up to speak.
Hello. Thank you for having me today. So today, I wanted to thank you for inviting us to talk about the fee program. A couple of things I wanted to share as our concerns about the I-5 and 99 corridors. 99 corridor is already congested, and the fee program will really help to address a lot of the congestion, not only on 99, but also on I-5. Without the fee program, the delay in the corridor would be expected to double by 2035. Caltrans has serious concerns about any new development within the corridor that will increase vehicle miles traveled, as well as worsening the congestion in the corridor. And so, we really see the need to ensure that new development mitigates their impact to the corridor. Right now, funding that Caltrans receives, because we've gotten some questions about, well, why can't Caltrans, you know, pay for, you know, various improvements that could increase capacity? The truth is, is we have fix-it-first funds, and so those are really dedicated towards bridge rehabilitation, pavement, safety, as well as culverts and other types of improvements of that nature. And so, as a result, we can't use that money for that purpose. And so, really, the only way that we're going to solve this problem is working together, and that's why we decided to initiate a partnership with the various local agencies along the corridor. As Mr. Carter communicated, for the past 10 years, this has been a partnership with Secog, Caltrans, as well as the cities of Sacramento, West Sacramento, and Elk Grove. And West Sac and Sacramento, they passed the programs, and so we're really looking for the council to support this fee program. A couple other things that I'll say is the voluntary fee program, it does significantly reduce congestion in areas where volume exceeds capacity, so that's important to note. And specifically, the fee program does four things. It promotes smart-growth principles and jobs-housing balance. It mitigates impacts to the mainline on I-5 and 99. The projects identified in Nexus study will collectively reduce congestion in these areas. It also streamlines the process. As was noted, there is no, no one's going to be forced to pay this fee. It's completely voluntary. If the development community chooses to go through a regular process, we'll be happy to do that with them. But we do see that there's significant savings, not only on the Caltrans end, but city staff as well as the developers. If they choose to pay the fee, then we'll simply document it in a letter and move on to the next project. If the fee isn't paid, then we'll just go through the regular process, and, you know, that would result in, you know, paying consultants to develop traffic impact studies and time to review those types of things. The fee program also enables the city to leverage funding. So the money that's generated would go towards a list of projects, and it will create an opportunity to leverage funds from Senate Bill 1. If you guys are familiar with the new revenues coming in, more specifically, there's a pot of money for local partnership program. And basically, what this program allows is cities that have fee programs for transportation use, then they're going to be able to compete for this funding. And so, that's more money that we can bring to the city to fund projects that benefits the community. And also, this allows us to leverage our fix-it-first funds to make that money go even further. So, Caltrans, we support this ordinance, and we hope the council supports it as well. And we do want to reaffirm the fact that, you know, we are in agreement with the fact that development projects that have already completed the Sequa process and have been approved, those will be exempt, and development projects with changes or revisions that require new Sequa determination will not be subject to the fee. If the revision or change is less than 10%, the approved project peak hour ends. And so, you know, we are hoping for your support. So thanks you for allowing me to speak.
Marlin, quick question for you, and thank you for coming tonight. Good to see you again. I spoke into your director about looking at, because there's so little we can do for capacity on the mainlines for I-5 and 99. I spoke to your director about looking how we can adjust the HOV lanes to either be hot lanes, or perhaps adjusting the timeframe for the HOV lanes to be mixed-use lanes, and the thought that, right now, it currently goes from, you know, 3:00 to 3:00 p.m. on, and 7:00 m. to 10:00 m. But if we were able to extend that mixed-use for a bit longer, we might push more of the peak traffic through, and thereby actually decrease impact on the mainline by the time the lanes narrow down, because the mixed lane becomes HOV. So I was wondering if you would mind just taking that back to your director, and if we could, if I can get an answer to that. I think, I'm trying to get creative on this solution as well, so.
Yeah, and we would agree that we need to look at all the options. Currently, we're working with Secog and a number of regional and local agencies on our managed lane study for the Sacramento area. Our vision for the region is to have a complete managed lane network. But rather than deal with some of these issues on a case-by-case basis, our preference is to make sure that we get our complete system in, and make sure that we're making those decisions on a system-wide basis, to ensure that, you know, we're making the right decisions. But certainly, in our managed lane study that we're developing, which will be completed in the spring, it should help shed some light in terms of various strategies that allow us to manage the system more efficiently.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Did I complete your presentation, Rick?
Yes, that completes the presentation.
All right. At this point, I wanted to declare the public hearing open, and want to open for public comment, seeing that there's no one signed up to speak. Want to close public comment, declare public hearing closed. Counsel deliberation and direction.
Motion.
Sorry, before Darren reads the motion, I'd just like to say that generally, I'm not in favor of new fees. However, there are a couple aspects to this that are worth mentioning, but it goes without saying that if the state government and the federal government were more responsible about the collection of taxes and keeping those taxes in pace, and more importantly, the redistribution of that money back, then Marlin's agency would not be underfunded where they can only keep up with fix-it-first priorities. They would be back to where they were building roads the way they ought to be. That being said, this is a voluntary program, and I believe that the development community will see a benefit to the time value of money with respect to being able to streamline the approval process from a Sequa standpoint of mitigating their impact. So if you'll read the motion.
Okay. Well, and let me just add real quick. I do empathize with that comment. I just, the path to correct that, I think, is much more difficult and probably unrealistic. And so, I think this is going to be the best compromise we get in trying to alleviate traffic for our residents.
I'll support that too, but in the interest of time, I'm just going to show a vote.
Motion to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance establishing voluntary development impact fees for I-5 subregional corridor transportation improvements.
Second.
All right, you got a motion second, all in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstention. All right, next motion.
Motion two.
All right, I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstention. All right, next item.
Take us on to item 9.2, which is actually for public hearings. Consider the 42nd annexation to Community Facilities District 2003-2 for Police Services, the 42nd annexation to CFD 2006-1 for Maintenance Services, 14th annexation to Street Maintenance District Zone, or District 1, Zone 5K, and the 17th annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone 2.
Mr. Mayor, despite Kara's diligence in remaining here this late, I would dispense with the staff presentation, if so be.
All right, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Want to declare a public hearing opened for CFD 2003-2, and want to open a public comment, seeing that there's no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment. Declare the public hearing for 2003-2 closed, and A1 motion number one.
Move A1 to call the special election. Second.
Okay, got a motion second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, want to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Of 71 possible votes, 71 affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than 2/3 of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the elections available for counsel consideration.
Move to adopt that a resolution.
Second.
Okay, that's motion A2. I got a motion second, all in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstention. Next motion.
Move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to Community Facilities District Number 2003-2 Police Services, Annexation Number 42, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.18.010.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention. All right, second public hearing. Want to declare public hearing for CFD 2006-1 open. Want to open for public comment, seeing that there are no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment. Want to declare public hearing for CFD 2006-1 closed. B1, motion one.
Motion B1.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention. All right, request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Of three possible votes, three affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. Measure passes with more than 2/3 of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure. Resolution declaring the results of the election is available for counsel consideration.
Motion B2, adopt the resolution.
Okay. Got a motion for B2? Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstention. All right, next motion.
Motion B3, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to Community Facilities District Number 2006-1 Maintenance Services, Annexation Number 42, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section 3.19.010.
Okay, got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstention. Third public hearing, SMD 1, Zone 5K. Declare the public hearing for SMD 1, Zone 5K, open. Want to open for public comment, seeing that there are no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment, and declare the public hearing for SMD 1, Zone 5K, closed. Request that the city clerk provide results.
And there is no majority protest of the 71 possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each equivalent dwelling unit. 71 affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the fine, sorry, the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballot. Resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for counsel consideration.
Okay. Open for a motion for the second.
Motion C.
Motion C, you got a second?
Second.
You got a motion second, all in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstention. All right, fourth public hearing. Declare public hearing open for SDF Zone 2, open. Want to open for public comment, seeing that there are no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment. Want to declare public hearing for SDF Zone 2, closed. Mr. Clerk, if you can read the ballot tabulation.
And for this fourth public hearing, then again, there's no majority protest of three possible votes, weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each non-residential acre. Three affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. Resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for counsel consideration.
Okay, do we have a motion on the floor?
Move motion D.
Got a motion?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstention. Next item.
Takes us to Section 10, our regular agenda action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, which is receive a presentation on funding available through the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, and consider a resolution amending the fiscal year 2017-18 budget and capital improvement program for local streets and roads program funded projects.
Before we start, I heard something that you got a promotion, so congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Congrats.
Thanks, Darren. Greetings, Mayor Lee, and fellow city council members. I'm Shane Ryan, your Budget Manager. Today, I'm here to talk to you about Senate Bill 1, the Road Repair and Accountability On April 28, Governor Brown signed the bill with the purpose and intention of maintaining and rehabilitating roads, and addressing critical safety needs on highways, streets, and roads, and to provide additional transit assistance. Senate Bill 1 is projecting to raise $52.4 billion in the first 10 years of inception, with additional taxes and fees being passed during the bill, in particular, 12-cent increase in gasoline excise tax, and a 20-cent increase in diesel excise tax, both of which will be implemented starting on November 1, 2017, and then also a 4% point-of-sale increase in diesel sales tax. Senate Bill 1 has eight programs underneath it. First and foremost, a local streets and roads program, approximately projecting $1.5 billion of annual state funding. The other seven programs will be covered later on in the presentation. But I want to start with this first one, because for the city of Elk Grove, with approximately $960,000 of additional revenue projected for this current fiscal year, and then nearly $2.9 million for fiscal year 9.
$2.9 million for fiscal year 19, and then additional $3 million approximately for the following three fiscal years, the city can construct 86 additional lane miles, or 223 street segments of pavement rehab within the next five years. And the FY '18 and '19 numbers are already incorporated in the current annual budget. So, Local Streets and Roads Program prioritizes road maintenance and rehab first and foremost, but also safety projects, railroad gray separations, complete street components for projects as well, along with traffic control devices. And to continue talking about the Local Streets and Roads Program, and to talk about the reporting requirements for the program, and to discuss the potential proposed budget and CIP amendment tonight, I'd like to invite Rick Carter, CIP manager, to come and continue.
Mr. Mayor, before Rick starts, I'd like to at least let you know that from the public work standpoint, the priority for this funding is going to be pavement. In general, maintenance, but in particular pavement. So we'd like to be able to dedicate as much of this funding, this three-plus million dollars a year, hopefully well into the future, to that effort. So, thank you. Go ahead, Rick.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening again. So, the CTC adopted guidelines at their meeting in August for the Local Streets and Roads Program, and it contains some reporting requirements. There are two annual reports that are due each year. The first is due this October 16th. There are two requirements in that. The first is that we provide a public record illustrating that the projects funded with this money is included in the budget or CIP, which is really the reason that we have brought forth that CIP and budget amendment. Because we knew those funds were coming, but we included them in the gas tax, because there were no guidelines. And so we've had to pull those out into a separate fund, so that we can track and report on them. The other part of the reporting is details on the projects. They're looking for typical kind of stuff, project description, location, schedule, the useful life of the improvements. And they also have a requirement that they'd like us to describe any technology, climate change, or complete streets considerations. They're still in process of actually developing the reporting format. The other required report is an annual expenditure report that basically comes at the end of the year, largely covers those same items, except they're looking for data on the funds that were expended and the completion date of the projects. One of the things I think that is important to let the council know, these reports are disclosure documents. The CTC made a big point that we submit this list of projects, and if the council's priorities change, if needs happen, if there's, you know, I don't know, flooding, and you want to use these funds toward road repair for a different project, you don't, the CTC is not approving this list. You, the council makes the change by whatever process the council normally does for, you know, moving money around with projects and move forward. It's simply reported the following year what we actually spent the funds on. So you still have the authority and discretion to make those changes anytime the council needs. As I mentioned, this has led to the budget and CIP amendment. Essentially, we are looking to move 960,000 in current year funds from the gas tax funds to a newly created SB 1 Streets and Roads Fund, so we can track this and report it. The two projects associated with that are the Bond Road Median Improvements and Resurfacing Project. This year, we had added 860,000 and kind of revised that project to include the resurfacing. It was originally just a median project. The other place the funds went was to the Green Bike Lane Pilot Project to strip our green bike lanes, which is a safety improvement and a traffic improvement. With that, I was going to kind of go over the other seven programs, just to discuss the available funding opportunities that are presented by SB 1, since there's lots of interest in that. So, they are in the process, CTC is in the process of approving guidelines for various programs, and myself and other staff have been participating and commenting on those guidelines. One of the programs is Active Transportation, statewide at 100 million a year. This first year, they decided to simply augment the existing program and fund more of the projects. This, at one of the prior meetings, we came with a little change for the Elk Grove Sidewalk Infill Project because of this. We were a couple of points short of getting funded. We have been told by CACOG to fully expect to receive 814,000 in grant funds for that project. So, it's another kind of immediate benefit for the city from SB 1. As a existing grant program, we'll continue to pursue ATP grants. One of the other programs that's having a lot of attention is the Local Partnership Program. This was created as an incentive for counties and districts to become self-help districts, where they go through, in general, voter approval to, like a sales tax measure, basically STA qualifies for this, the Measure A, to fund transportation. Slide covers eligible projects, capacity increases, transit facilities, bike and ped, certain sound walls. It also covers maintenance and rehab. There, the guidelines are in process. We have been making comments on those, along with others. They're looking to finalize those in October. I think what's important for the council to understand with this is, of that 200 million, they are allocating 50% of it by formula. Because STA is the agency that administers the Measure A funding, that allocation will go to STA, and STA will have responsibility for determining how to allocate those funds. So, we don't have any guidance yet. If they look to do that formulaically to the agencies, if they want to put it toward projects, that'll be something I think that the STA board will have to take up. The other part of this is 50% of those funds are going to competitive grants. The, again, with those programs, they are looking to have those grants come from the agencies that are administering those self-help fees. So, for a competitive grant, they would have to come through STA. They do have, a portion of these funds are available to agencies that have impact fees. They've capped that at 10%. And so we can also apply directly as the city of Elk Grove, but only for that 10% portion of the pot. Both of these, both the formula allocation for projects and the competitive, require a one-to-one match from local funds. So, looking at next year's CIP, we'll have to figure out how we want to set this up to make ourselves eligible and have the matching funds. Other programs, SB 1 funds additional funds to the STIP. That's an existing program that funds state highway improvements, intercity rail, and regional highway and transit improvements. Elk Grove is eligible for funding via grants through CACOG and Caltrans. That's an existing program. We apply for those now as part of the CACOG flexible funding program. This just puts more money into it. The next program is congested corridors. It is a competitive grant program. They're looking to adopt guidelines in December of 2017. The guidelines aren't as fleshed out as some of the other programs. They are looking to, they've kind of established the criteria that's listed here. They've identified applications due in February, but this is all not worked out yet.
Sorry, that's 250 million annually.
Annually, yeah. All these are annually, and these are statewide.
Okay.
What I should, I'm going to back up for a moment. Back to the 50% formula allocation from STA. STA has got word that they're expecting somewhere in the neighborhood of 4 million a year from this program. So STA will have that fund and have to figure out how they're going to allocate that, and what process they're going to use for taking applications and programs. I'll also add into this, since I'm back on this slide, under the competitive program, the CTC has stated that they want the agency, in this case STA, to prioritize the projects that come in. So, I think for those of our council members that sit on the STA board, understand that that will come up. Next is the Trade Corridor Enhancement Account, 300 million a year. The draft guidelines are not expected to be available until December, so there's not a lot of information on this yet. It is a corridor-based, basically freight projects nominated by local agencies and states. Second to last program is the SHOP. This is essentially the funds that go to the state highway system. Covers maintenance, safety, and rehabilitation. It's kind of the fix-it-first funding that Marlin made reference to earlier. There is opportunities for us to partner with Caltrans for improvements on I-5 and State Route 99, for things like auxiliary lanes, ramp metering, and traffic management improvements. It's not eligible for local roads. And the very last one is essentially, it's sort of inconsequential to us. It was a kind of a one-time 90 million funding as a kind of a cleanup for closing out an existing program the CTC has, and they're not taking any new, any new programs. So recommend an action is approving the budget and the CIP amendment, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? No questions?
Perfectly clear. Thank you, sir.
At this time, want to open public comment. And I see that there is no one signed up to speak. Want to close public comment, council deliberation.
I'll move to adopt the resolution.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? All in favor? Aye. Oppose, abstention? Next item.
Take us to item 10.2, which is consider an ordinance adding Chapter 16.07 to the municipal code relating to electric vehicle charging station permit streamlining.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Shane Diller, Assistant Development Services Director. I don't have a formal presentation this evening. This item is an item we're bringing in order to comply with state law in 2015. Assembly Bill 1236 required that cities of less than 200,000 adopt into their ordinances language that would require that we streamline the permitting of electrical vehicle charging stations through the use of electronic permitting and checklist systems that help guide the applicant. We actually implemented that shortly after the law went into place, so we have the requirements that the state law requires in place and have for over 18 months now. So this is more to make sure that the code catches up with the requirement that by October, the law be in our books, and it won't necessarily change our practices. We'll continue to streamline those permits as we seek to streamline any permits that we can. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions? No questions? Thank you, sir. Want to open public comment, seeing that no members of the public signed up to speak. Want to close public comment, council deliberation and direction.
I'll make the motion to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance adding Elk Grove Municipal Code Chapter 16.07 relating to electric vehicle charging station permit streamlining. CECL is exempt.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention? All right, that's it. Let's adjourn the meeting at 9:06.